Are you ready? I think we're all set. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Newton Town Council. If everyone can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Kous.
Here.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Diglio.
Here.
Mrs. Teetz.
Here.
Mayor LaFois.
Here. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January 3rd, 2025. Tom. I'll turn it over to you for a moment.
I have some information to read, Mayor, for your presentation.
Please.
Max has excelled on the court and in the classroom these past four years at Newton High School. He's a three-year varsity letter winner in basketball and a two-time team captain. He's also a varsity letter winner in baseball. Max averaged twenty points this season for the Braves. And on February 10th, Max scored his 1,000th career point versus Mount Olive. Max is the 12th player in Newton High School history to reach 1,000 points and is the first player since Stephen Kelly in 2014 to reach 1,000 points. Max finished his career ninth all-time in scoring at Newton High School with 1,119 points and was named first-team All-NJ Colonial Division this season. Max has also excelled in the classroom for the past four years. He is ranked eighth in his class and currently holds a 4.3 weighted GPA. Max has been named regularly to the Summa Com Laude honor roll during his four years at Newton High School. He plans to attend a four-year college in the fall to continue his education and athletic career.
Max, congratulations. We had to wait over ten years for you. Um, and, and you have over a 4.0 GPA. I mean, and basketball wasn't even your favorite sport up until just a couple of years ago. Please join me in a front, Max. We have a certificate for you. So our certificate says it's a certificate of achievement. This certificate proudly presented to Max Maslowski for his extraordinary athletic and academic achievements, including reaching 1,000 career points in basketball. Congratulations. Uh, your hard work, dedication, how many, how many shots do you take a day to practice?
I don't know. Probably, well, during the season, probably like a couple.
A couple hundred a day. That's dedication, right? In order to achieve this status, you definitely need to have dedication. Um, plans for school next year?
Oh, I submitted to Marywood a couple of days ago.
Congratulations. You gonna play basketball there?
Yeah.
My gosh, we look forward to seeing future achievements and we'll remember that you came from Newton when you're up there scoring all of those points. So here's a certificate for you. I would love to have some comments from the council and can we get a picture altogether with Max? Why don't we get the picture first? Um.
This is always the hardest.
Yeah. Uh, and your family, of course. So what do you, what do you, what's your next goal?
Uh, I don't really know. Probably just like, just like, well, I.
Yeah.
Well, there.
Yeah. Finish the school year, right?
Yeah.
You must be so proud. Congratulations. We know.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We know that this type of achievement doesn't happen without the family support. Making sure that he gets to practices and plays on all the travel teams that I read about, right? And then certainly listening to all the shots.
Yes.
Uh, on and on and on.
The neighbors, well.
And the neighbors, right. Of course. All right.
Of course, he's the tallest one there.
Thank you. Well, absolutely. Would you say anything else? Um, so we're, we all have a couple of comments for you, but we just wanted to say congratulations and tell you how proud of you that we are and that we look forward to so much more success in the coming years. And to congratulate you, your family, of course. Um, and we'll be watching, but let us, we'll, we can be here and have some comments as well. So Max, you've probably heard that people often say, ask if you want something done, ask a busy person, right? And certainly, um, attributes of success, you already have so many of those characteristics, right? Your dedication to your sport, um, the dedication to success in school. You have a great smile and you're tall. Um, but certainly, you know, you don't get to where you're at and have all of those accomplishments at your age without, um, being of sound and level mind, of being a good person overall, a contributing member to your family and certainly to our community, community. So we're really proud of you. Um, and just know that when you're out on the court, you take the entire Newton community with you um, and your successes now and, and moving forward. The premier?
Yeah, I mean, just congratulations, Max. Um, it's quite an achievement. Um, yeah, I have kids who are athletes too, so I understand all the hard work and dedication that it takes, you know, not only from you, from the family as well. Um, so it's a lot of sacrifice. Um, and it's quite impressive that you're able to do all that, not only athletically, but also academically. Um, so your family should be very proud of you. Um, Newton is proud of you and just congratulations and keep up the good work.
Councilman Teetz?
So Max, congratulations. I obviously got to watch you for a couple of years when Robert was playing. Um, you guys both play with a lot of heart on the court. Um, and I'm so happy for your success and for your parents' success. I will admit, I did not fact-check this, so I heard Helen mention that Stephen Kelly was the last 1,000 point that I believe. Um, and that was 2014. My source gave me 2016, so just saying. You can all imagine who my source was. And then, uh, but also, um, I understand that Coach Kelly, Stephen's father, was your father's coach, is that correct?
Wow.
So kind of just proves that once a brave, always a brave, right? So, uh, you know, congratulations to you and your family. And like, uh, the mayor mentioned, we look forward to, uh, to reading about you in the future and, and what you're doing, both academically and on the court. So congrats and go Braves this baseball season.
Councilwoman Kous?
So, um, height does not run in my family. As such, uh, we were a band of soccer players. Um, but I am a Newton High School alumnus and it's great to see the next generation of alumni coming through and doing great things. So keep up the great work and lots in the story.
Councilwoman Diglio?
Congratulations, Max, on all your achievements and for making Newton very proud of you. It's always nice to have someone do so much to achieve. I appreciate that very much. Congratulations and thank you to your family for all the support that they've given you through these years. Without them, yes, it would have been a little more difficult. Thank you to all of you.
How about a big round of applause? Not to put anybody on the spot, but any comments from Max or his family or? All good. Okay, fantastic.
I'll say that, uh.
Yes.
College, they send their, he's in their league, so once a year.
Oh, there you go. There you go. That is true. That is true.
And I know I walked in with Max's grandparents and they're exceptionally proud as well. Um, I mean, I said it again, I said Max and yes, Max. I think I called you Alex on the way in and I'm like, I just combined your first name and last name and yeah, I apologize for that. But congratulations to all.
Do we have coaches present? Is, yep.
Oh, Coach Vile.
Coach, we just did a presentation for Max and his family and took some pictures, but did you want to say anything, not to put you on the spot, but hopefully? Thanks, Coach. Absolutely, absolutely. We're so proud. Okay, any other comments for moving on with our agenda? All right, we're gonna move on to approval of minutes. I did. I did. I read, oh, all right. Yes. Okay. Yep. Uh, all right, so we have the February 10th, 2025 budget meeting, the February 24th, 2025 regular meeting and the February 24th, 2025 executive meeting. I don't believe they have to be done separately tonight, right? Okay, do I have a motion? All right.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the February 10th, 2025, February 24th, uh, regular meeting and the February 24th executive session meeting.
You have a second? I have a second. I have a motion to accept all three, uh, meeting minutes by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Councilwoman Teetz. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Kous.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor LaFois.
Yes. At this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. In reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Counsel may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. If we have anyone present for comments, sure? If you'll approach the microphone? Please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record.
I'm Hazel Coward, C-O-W-A-R-D.
And I'm Rufus Coward, C-O-W-A-R-D, ladies and gentlemen.
We were here, we was here last meeting. And we was here about the house on 20 Union Place. And, um, I came with, uh, they told me at the bank that it would take about thirty days, you know, before they could get everything spread away. And I was supposed to come back tonight. We got a couple estimates of what's supposed to be done. And the little thing that the bank gave us, that it give us anything of, of the loan or whatever, you know, they gave us the information that might be helpful. But that's where we are now. We even on the, on the bank.
Okay. Any information, updated information that you have, have you already submitted that to the manager's office?
No, I didn't. That happened.
Okay.
I can go again?
Uh, is there anything else that has changed, um, in regards to the status of, uh, estimates or anything else that's changed in the last three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so let's give Mr. Russo some, um, opportunity to review that and we'll come back to that. Anyone else for public comment at this time? Mr. Russo, do we have anyone attending online? Looks like a big list tonight. Um, who has a question or comment?
Hello, my name is Carrie Parmley and, um, I am from the Mental Health Association um, of Smars and Sussex Counties where we have a program called NJ4S. And that stands for, uh, New Jersey Statewide Student Support Services. And I'm a supervisor of a prevention and education and prevention program in Sussex and Morris County Schools, grades six to twelve. And we are, um, we just wanted to reach out to the towns of our counties that we're serving. This is a, uh, fully grant-funded, 100% free program to all of our schools and we are in many schools in Sussex and Morris County. We are also, um, hosting a Hike for Hope that supports, it's called the Northwest New Jersey Hike for Hope, um, on Saturday, May 31st, and we're inviting all of the, um, townships to, uh, join us to support the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. Um, it's going to be held that Saturday at Camp Jefferson on Weldon Road, um, from nine to 11 a.m. And the town of Newton can support this event, um, just like many of our other, um, townships and, uh, town councils and mayors that are, are going to be invited to join and, um, many of the municipal municipalities and, um, and law enforcement. So we're hoping that, um, just to raise awareness on suicide and, and help fund the prevention programs of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. By joining us in this Hike for Hope, you can help local schools and communities. Um, because the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention in New Jersey also trains all of our prevention staff that goes into the school. And we have, uh, five or six different type of programs for students and faculty and parents that help, um, prevent suicide in our community. And we want to create that community that understands and is smart about our mental health. So I just came to, to let you know about that. And I have a flyer I can share if, uh, the towns would like to accept it. Um, that, um, we can take registrations for teams and individual walkers.
Ms. Parmley, thank you very much for attending our meeting and, um, uh, for presenting the information that you presented. I know firsthand the great work that the Mental Health Services of Morris and Sussex County does. Um, and certainly we would encourage you to send that flyer to the town manager's office, who will make sure that we receive the information. Are you also sharing this information directly with the Board of Ed here in Newton?
Yes, we'd like to send it to the Board of Eds in all of the townships within, um, Sussex County as well as Morris.
Great. If you could get that information to Mr. Russo's office prior to Thursday evening. We actually have a joint, uh, town council and Board of Ed meeting on Thursday evening here in Council Chambers. Um, and we're, we're certainly happy to share that information with our Board of Ed partners at that meeting as well. Um, so if you're able to get that to, uh, Mr. Russo's office, um, in the next day or so, we'll make sure to help promote it and, uh, look forward to supporting the good work that you're doing there.
Thank you. I would definitely give that to, to you by, by, um, tomorrow.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Russo? Okay.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Lamela.
Yes, good evening, Lamela McCash, Newton. Um, I, um, uh, I don't know if it's the right thing to do, but I think since I didn't hear from, um, your clerk or deputy clerk, I have requested, uh, a meeting with you and the assessor. Now I'm going to extend that for a meeting between you, assessor, meaning the town manager, tax assessor and the lawyer of the town. Since I'm getting, uh, some confusing, I'm using carefully the term confusing, then conflicting, uh, information from, uh, the town lawyer. When I know that I've spoken with you guys last year, I would like in this meeting, which I'm requesting this publicly, but this is something personal about my property. Uh, I'd like to, on, in this meeting, uh, I'd like, uh, to be present also the councilman, uh, John Paul Kous, since last year he was a mayor. And he's more into the, what's happened last year with the taxes. I think I'm getting, um, and I'm going through some really difficulties in regard to what's happened last year about, about the taxes. And when I was hoping this would have been resolved last year, now I'm getting some difficulties with the lawyer, which, uh, another thing I'm getting from the, uh, uh, town assessor's, uh, assistants that he had been informed. In the other side, I'm getting other information from him. I greatly will appreciate if, uh, this meeting is going to take place as soon as possible this week. Since now it's been a couple, I don't know how many weeks, uh, that I have requested for that. I greatly will appreciate this if, uh, you'll facilitate that. Uh, so then we can sit and we can discuss this in a roundtable.
Mrs. McCash, am I under the proper assumption that this is with regards to a tax appeal on one of your properties?
Yes, but, uh, this is, uh, I took the path to discuss that with, uh, with the manager and the tax, uh, the, the tax assessor. Uh, I really, I didn't want to bring this in the town council meeting, but, uh, since I'm having difficulties getting this meeting, uh, maybe I don't know what's the problem with the clerk, with the town clerk or the deputy clerk. Maybe now that they can hear me in this meeting, they can coordinate that as soon as possible, because this is a huge, and really I need to, to sit down and to see what's going on, because I'm getting other, uh, uh, information from the, um, from the lawyer and another what I was told. So I just ended this meeting with you guys. Meaning with the town manager, first an assessor and the lawyer. And then if things do not resolve, then I'll come publicly after, afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Baldini, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
B-A-L. I'm sorry, um, so I see on the agenda here, there's a $7 million appropriation for, uh, water and sewer. I was just wondering, um, that doesn't include the, um, water treatment plant that we had planned, which I think was at three or four million. Uh, so just wondering that, that's separate from that, is, is that correct? And, um, I was also wondering, um, what the demolition, uh, thing was about in the agenda. There's a, a point for demolitions. Just wondering what that was about. And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom, any others? Okay, uh, we'll move on to council manager reports and, and address some of those questions that came up at that time. So I will start with you, Ms. Russo.
Sure, uh, obviously the council will decide about Resolution 91 later about the demolition, about 20 Union. I'll take the flyer from Carrie and distribute that. Dr. McCash, we can coordinate something that I have nothing to do with assessments, so we can coordinate something with Scott and Bob McBreyer. And when we get to the ordinance, Tom, you can speak to 2025-5. And obviously I want to say thank you to everybody who coordinated the parade and volunteered and worked the parade this past weekend. It was great and congratulations to Sandy on being the grand marshal. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kous?
Thank you. Uh, Dr. McCash, happy to speak. I have a couple hours free, uh, Friday afternoon. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilwoman Diglio?
I wanted to thank everyone also that helped with the parade. The policemen, our GPW, they were fantastic. Don't know what we would do without them. Um, and, uh, I want to remind everyone that the Memorial Day Parade is now in the works and, uh, that will be on Memorial Day.
No rest for the weary on the parade group, right, Michelle and Sandy? All right, Councilmember Teetz?
Um, sorry, I do have some notes. Just trying to find them in my stack of paperwork.
So I'll just pass on to the, the parade was a lot of fun. Um, I know it was early March, but it's because we, there's not enough, um, bands. So we have to kind of get on their availability as well. Um, and we can't compete with some of the bigger counties. Um, but, you know, once again, I'll take credit for the weather because, uh, it turned out not to be such a bad day. Um, and there were tons of people and lots of positive comments. So, um, Sandy, we got to think about what to do next year to make it bigger and better every year. Um, and just real quick, I'd like to, uh, you know, since we had, um, Max earlier with his thousand points, I'd also like to congratulate Coach Billett on being named the New Jersey Girls Wrestling Coach of the Year, which is, you know, really impressive. Um, the program's only been around for a few years and we have some awesome wrestlers, uh, female wrestlers that did well in the States, um, this past weekend. So Eva Berry finished second in, uh, States in her weight class. Uh, Paige DeCaro, um, did the same second in her weight class. And Stella Ramos, uh, fourth place in her weight class. So way to represent Braves and, uh, also just a quick congratulations to the Lady Braves basketball team too. Uh, although they lost in the, in the first round of the, uh, New Jersey State Playoffs, uh, they were seventeen and six overall this season. And with a 10-0 record in the, uh, New Jersey ADC, the NJAC Colonial Division. So great job, Lady Braves.
Yeah, that's great.
And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, Deputy Mayor Dixon.
Welcome, Mr. Dixon.
Okay. Um, Michelle, thank you for bringing up the girls wrestling program. Um, it, Newton's like been a pioneer. I mean, first of all, Newton's been a pioneer in, in men's wrestling generationally. Um, but, you know, to launch really early on with a female wrestling program has been impressive, impressive, but then to get to the level of, um, play that they've been at is, is really significant. So that's great. Thanks for, um, pointing that out. Um, so as I mentioned, we do have a joint town council and Board of Ed meeting this Thursday at 5:30 p.m. Um, here in Council Chambers. Um, I also wanted to extend my thanks and congratulations to an awesome St. Patrick's Day parade. For those of you responsible for the weather, Michelle, I thought you guys were playing an evil joke on Saturday morning when it was snowing. Um, but it all ended up being fantastic and I actually liked having it be first, um, in the area because we were able to get, you know, bands from Pennsylvania, Bergen County, all over the place. And, I mean, it was pretty packed from Lower Spring Street all the way down. You know, we marched until the end of Memory Park and, um, Sandy, congratulations on, uh, um, not only continuing with Michelle and, and, um, Jason Miller and so many others to be, um, on the parade committee working over those several, several months, but for being the grand marshal, it's great to see you get that recognition for sure. Um, and of course, thank you to our police department, our first responders, um, mutual aid, everybody that participated. I just heard a really, a lot of great comments, um, just on how the town looked and, you know, that it was, it was a wonderful day. So, thank you. Um, I did get a message right before parade kickoff, um, from our legislators in the 24th district who were planning to be there. Um, Governor Murphy called them about an hour prior and requested their presence at his, uh, walk of the Route 80 sinkholes. Um, and so they were unable to attend because they were there, uh, walking Route 80 with, with the governor, um, who subsequently has, uh, issued a state of emergency with regards to that, um, area. So, uh, we continue, really our DPW guys, um, working with Cory's office, continue to work very hard on making sure our hockey, our hockey rink is, um, being worked on, uh, weather permitting, on a daily basis to get them ready for the spring season. I know Deputy Mayor Dixon is, is tracking that closely. Um, Tom is, is doing weekly updates to the leadership of the hockey committee. So thank you, Tom, um, for, uh, keeping everybody moving along and, and getting that project kicked off and, uh, hopefully ready for the season. Um, not this past weekend, but last week, I attended the county commissioner's quarterly mayor's breakfast. Um, the two big issues of discussion was, uh, the county's plan endorsement process, which is something that happens every 10 years. Um, the state is putting the county under a tight, tight timeline, um, to get all feedback from all of the municipalities and the county compiled into report by the summertime. But the town of Newton is ahead of schedule. Um, and because we have already been working on our plan endorsement process, uh, Jessica and Tom, I think Newton was the first municipality to participate in the new process for getting the plan endorsement, um, status, uh, done and accomplished. So it was preliminary, um, preliminarily approved and then last week it was finally approved. So since we're already ahead, we don't have to participate in the county's crazy timeline and process, um, to, to participate, which is really great. The second item of conversation was the Open Space Trust Fund, um, which is up for renewal. And, um, so information is going to be coming from the county because they want municipal input, um, to not only our municipality, but in general comments and feedback and impact on the county's open, uh, trust fund, Open Space Trust Fund. As you may know, um, for several years, we all pay an additional tax for monies to go to the county Open Space Trust Fund. Um, and that is for farmland preservation, preserving open space, trails, uh, monies that can be given to trails, et cetera. The county, it is, is currently under an excess in that fund. And so, um, they are potentially even looking to suspend that tax, um, for a little while. Um, so, Tom, we're just awaiting for information, which I know is going to be sent to your office just with regards to then whatever input we want to provide and/or even any requests for the county to generously grant some of those excess funds to perhaps the town of Newton for any needs that we may have relative to open space. Um. I think Tom's already addressed, uh, Ms. McCash, there, I mean, there's a process, uh, the tax appeal, but I'll leave that to Tom to, uh, check in with our tax assessor. but I'll leave that to Tom to check in with our tax assessor. With regards to Ms. Baldini's question, there's going to be a presentation from our consulting engineering firm on where we are with some projects relative to water and sewer later in our agenda. So we'll look for those questions and presentations and I think you'll find some more information there. And then with regards to resolution ninety-one twenty-twenty-five, it's a carryover from our last meeting. Other than that, I have no other things reported this time. So we'll move on to item eight on our agenda and this is a discussion. We have with us actually Chief of Police Joseph Diannabel. Are you presenting also? Come on, okay, I was gonna say, why don't we pull up another chair as well? Or perhaps council will move over.
Mayor, you have information that we submitted. There's a memo from my office today to discuss the police department staffing and then just a continuation of the fee ordinance discussion that we had end of last year. We'll start with the police department staffing request from the chief and talk about the current municipal code and our goals for staffing and how that would require an adjustment of the ordinance.
Lieutenant Finkel, thank you for joining us as well.
Thank you. So yes, I am requesting an increase in staffing. Currently, we have Chief of Police, two lieutenants, five sergeants and fifteen patrolmen. Out of those fifteen patrolmen, twelve are patrol officers, two are detectives and one is a school resource officer. So I'm requesting to add a sergeant's position for a total of six sergeants. And then that would be somebody from within our ranks to be promoted to sergeant and then to replace that sergeant on the road. So really adding one officer to the ranks and one sergeant's position for a total of, from twenty-three total officers to twenty-four total officers. So with respect to numbers, it's one additional patrol officer from what we have now. With one of them moving to the sergeant's position. So back in two thousand and six, when I arrived here, the staffing levels were one chief, three lieutenants, four sergeants and sixteen patrol. Of them, it was twelve were in patrol, two detectives, a traffic officer and an S R O. So basically, I am requesting to get back to what we were over a decade ago. With that, the reason that I'm asking for this is a need in another supervisory role to assist with our newly inherited animal control. This supervisor, I would like to be a humane law enforcement officer. So they would be authorized to investigate crimes against animals. This could also be a shared service point of view. A lot of the towns that we service, their humane law enforcement officer is the state police. So it could be an added benefit to those towns if we chose to draft up an agreement with them to provide law enforcement services through animal control. Mainly, it is to oversee that unit, to enhance management capabilities. There's definitely a supervisory gap in that department. Lieutenant Finkel happens to oversee the department right now. And his day-to-day responsibilities take up most of his time. And with the added animal control, it's, he's, he's completely overburdened. It's definitely a need to have a supervisor in that role. Not saying that this is going to be the only job with this new supervisor, it is going to be one of them. We would also look to have this supervisor supervise the firearms investigations. Our detective bureau, mainly Detective Vex, has, has spearheaded that, he does a great job. In recent years, with laws changing, it has become a lot. And I think having that supervisor to help manage that would be great need. We also have our bodyborne cameras and motor vehicle recorder reviews and Oprah. Officers respond to, you know, roughly seven, eight hundred calls a week and they are documented in their entirety. And when they need to be reviewed, even as a, an attorney general guideline, you have to, you know, supervise and review them. But then we have the Oprah aspect and the discovery aspect. And my other lieutenant, who is in charge of Oprah, is being overburdened with these new guidelines and redactions. Because now in the new law, certain things have to be redacted. And in order to redact a video, you have to watch the entirety of it to, you know, from start to finish. Some of these videos could be hours. And not only watching them, but then figuring out where the redactions need to happen and spending time in that software, physically redacting that software, it's time consuming. So, yeah, and it's right, and it's, you know, not just one video per call. It could be potential four or five videos per call, depends on how many officers in there. So it's, it's, it's time consuming. We have police licensing now. Extensive backgrounds on officers every year, it's broken down, the department's broken down into thirds by the state. And they need to be renewed every three years. So roughly around ten officers a year need to be reviewed. Those ten officers are good for three years, but then the next year, and the other ten, and then another ten. So it's, it's every year, even though there's a three-year period that they're good for, but it's every year that we have to do the backgrounds on the officers. We have to make sure all their training is up, documented, uploaded to the Akatus Portal and it's audited by the state. Our detective bureau is mainly doing these backgrounds. And I think having this sergeant position to manage these types of added burdens that have been put on us in recent years. I think it would be beneficial to the town to put out the best product that we can. My lieutenants and detective bureau and all my officers go above and beyond and do what they need to do with what we have. And I think it would be a, a good gesture to increase the, the number of officers that we have by one with adding this sergeant's position to help manage what we have going on. So going back to two thousand and six, we had the fourth detective, which was an S R O, which went away, I would say, was maybe two thousand and eleven. We graciously got that back last year with the board of ed. And we have our school resource, uh, school resource officer, Justin Bellis. He is doing great. So that got us back to, you know, one less than what we had. And now we're looking to add that, add that final one to get us back to the numbers that we were about to two thousand eleven, twelve-ish. With that, that officer was a traffic officer. I would also like for this sergeant to take on some of those responsibilities as well, providing pursuing traffic-related grants that, that we could maybe get some funding for traffic enforcement in town. Oprah-related traffic requests could be handled by this sergeant as well. And I know the elephant in the room is changing the ordinance to a maximum of twenty patrol officers. That was to give us a little bit of leeway for growth in the future. I'm not asking for another four or five guys. I just think, I know you guys have been vested in helping the police department when we have retirements. Somebody's retiring, you guys have consistently allowed us to hire somebody a little bit early. If we did do these increases, that number would, we would still fall in the ordinance if we hired somebody early for retirement and that was scheduled, it means that we'd be within the ordinance. And I don't think we would have to address this, you know, three years to come. My other take on that is how well our school resource officer is doing. I could see the school in recent or in short upcoming years saying, hey, we want, we want another school resource officer and it would fall within that ordinance and we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to modify it. So I think I think that's pretty much all I got. Ready for some questions?
Okay, Lieutenant Finkel, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I think the chief hit a lot of the points. I think, you know, I just want to share my perspective, you know, as a lieutenant, doing these things day-to-day. You know, these are all new responsibilities within the past couple of years here. Nobody's a fan of all of these endless unfunded state mandates that require so many of these things to, to happen. But they are requirements nonetheless, they, these are things that have to be done. This is the most ideal solution. We talked about a number of different ways to achieve all of these different things. But when you look at, you know, even, you know, you take, you mentioned the redactions of the video. This is a labor-intensive requirement that, that is upon us now to, you know, remove everybody's personal information from video before we release it. Lieutenant Wylansky currently, you know, if he gets one request, these are all time-sensitive things that he has to do within a certain amount of time. But for example, if we have a call, any type of, let's say disturbance call or something where there's three officers there, we have a motor, motor vehicle recorder in the car. We have a bodyborne camera on that officer and we have that times however many officers we have. So if you're dealing with, let's say, a domestic violence situation for an hour and a half, that's three hours of video per officer. That's, you know, nine hours of video to be reviewed, just to review it and figure out what needs to be redacted. Then go back and do this, this is one call. We're getting these all of the time. And this is taking, this is taking us so much time away from what we need to focus on. There's only three of us as administrators to run this entire department. And it's not just the police department, we have, you know, other functions that we have to do. As my, you know, in the support services lieutenant, aside from all of the vehicle maintenance and the computer network issues and all the things that are important, I have, you know, close to two dozen crossing guards that I need to supervise day-to-day. I have almost a dozen, you know, dispatchers. We have the detective bureau, I was just back to detective bureau tonight, looking at the stack of firearms investigations that no matter how hard they try, they're, they just can't get to the bottom of it because more and more keep coming in. And this is detracting from our day-to-day responsibilities every single day in all of these different ways. These things are an albatross for all of us. And when you look at the different things, it's, you know, it's not just animal control, it's not just the redactions, it is the whole picture. And this, you know, talking about different ways to, to achieve all of these things, you know, Lieutenant Wylansky, myself, I mean, we're always here on our day off doing this stuff. We're here, I take home stuff on the weekends to try to get it done, but it is a lot. And when you consider this is, this is really the most responsible, sustainable way to approach it. It's to allocate someone to do these things, handle this threat. The three of us could focus on running the department day-to-day. We're in a position now where we have a very young department. This is a challenge that we really haven't had, at least in my career, we're here over twenty years now. We haven't had something where we have such a young department. And the few of us senior guys that are left are eligible for retirement very soon. We have a very important mandate to get this department to a point where we can safely retire without leaving these, these big challenges to these young officers. And we have to focus on those things and handle those things deliberately. And we can't do this when we're constantly bogged down with firearms investigations and redactions and animal issues and all of the things that are really bothering us now. So I just wanted to share from my perspective as, as lieutenant, that's, that's how I see it from every day.
Yeah, I seem to recall that was some of the conversation that we had upon just some recent retirements and certainly your both promotions. We said, okay, now we need to do some training and succession planning and other planning within the department. Mr. Russo, did you have anything that you wanted to add to the conversation at this point?
No, just looking for guidance from the council, if council's amendable, we should do the ordinance at the next.
Okay, so a couple, I mean, thank you for your memo, I know that you outlined five reasons. There are actually, I think, a couple others that, that I could add to this conversation and I'm interested in your feedback as well as, as what the impact has been. But I know also in the, so it's interesting, right, that we had a different staffing model back in two thousand and six. I don't know that I quite realized that, but there's been an increase in community policing and efforts outreach in lots of different ways, right, on an annual basis. There's been a lot more construction detail as we've gotten more grants around construction projects or GCPN L's been in town or the state or the county are doing things or even just our own, you know, watering breaks and things like that. So I think about that and the impact over time and staffing, et cetera. We've recently done the drone licensing, right, what we're called into mutual aid and impacts of that and training and staffing, et cetera. I believe when I've looked recently at the monthly reports, calls have increased in, in over
Say, I have the last five years. We're probably right around eight to ten thousand calls more than we were five years ago. And I'm sure you're about to hit this next, our town doesn't look like the way that it did ten years ago. We have more apartment buildings, more establishments. We're growing and we need to grow the police department with, with the town that is growing. We like to call it the town of progress.
Speaking, kind of speaking to that, the next thing I'd written down was, and, you know, Lieutenant Finkel mentioned unfunded state mandates. Don't get me started there, but even just the change in the cannabis laws and the cannabis retailers that are now and the patrol that comes with that that we've, actually, we, this council and Tom and the team have said, you know, we've set some guidelines around the cannabis retailers and what that business in town means along with the change in the laws and then the unfunded mandates that came from the states with regards to law enforcement around cannabis consumption and not even the D R Es and all that kind of stuff, I could keep going. And then I think the other elephant in the room is to talk about, and I don't know if Tom's going to do this or whatever, but if there, what are the impacts to the budget, right? We just had budget hearings and we're just having this conversation tonight. But, you know, what that's, what, what that impact might be. And then the last thing, which you had already touched on, Lieutenant Finkel, was just the, the age of the department and the, I think, expanded training that needs to happen over the next several years before the rest of you retire to make sure that the department is, as my dad would say, up to snuff, I don't even know where that just came from, but, um, for the, for the job at hand and what you're going to be leaving them. So just interested on any of those other points that it has made, if you guys had any additional narrative or anecdotal information you wanted to mention.
Mr. Ferry, I don't know if you want to touch on the budget.
Yes, for the budget, so the sergeant moving up, if he's going to be working with A C O overseeing it and to be in a humane
Humane law enforcement.
Yeah, we don't have to necessarily charge it to the regular budget. Most, most of the salary could, or part of the salary would be charged to the outside decap shared service agreements. We also have the trust account for the animal control where we can charge it to that also. So part of the salary won't even be touching his budget. So if anything, if he moves up at his current salary, his current salary doesn't impact the budget whatsoever. Most of it will be charged outside the cap. The new officer will impact, but it's a small amount and easily the budget can absorb that. The new officer will impact, but it's a small amount and easily the budget can uh absorb that.
We already budgeted.
I have a con, why wasn't this brought up when we were discussing the budget, when we had police in here? Why wasn't any of this brought up before? And you said it was budgeted for, but we were not aware, I'm not aware of where it was budgeted.
Working through this to get it ready for the presentation for the council. So the money we had to put in obviously as a placeholder, but the mechanics of what this will look like and the responsibilities would be, we've still been working on.
Council, do you have any other questions? Well.
None on that, no.
Any councilman Cruz questions?
Circle back.
Okay, circle back. Deputy Mayor Dixon?
Um, so. I mean, the first thing that, do we have any numbers on the firearms investigations? And how they've increased since the law has changed? Um, as far as the footage review, I'd like to know. Who can do that? Is it limited to a superior officer or can that be assigned to anybody? More control. It's important, we're talking, the police department needs to get bigger. Maybe we should be getting smaller in other aspects. Either animal control or dispatch, that would ease the burden. Um. As far as responsibilities. And I would just kind of like to have an overall better view of what everybody's responsibility is. What the lieutenant's responsibilities are, what they oversee, what the sergeants oversee and what their responsibilities are, because honestly, I don't know.
There, um, all the responsibilities are, um. Have been submitted. Um, they're on our website, yeah, on our website. Um, I believe the numbers of. Uh, firearm applications may be on there, but if not, um, we're, we're usually around two hundred uh firearms applications roughly a year. Uh, and then the carry permits vary depending uh another twenty-five a year. Um, roughly, that's uh, that's the rough amount uh per year.
Um, yeah, and with the firearms permits, that's something uh that is experienced statewide. Wherever we go, police departments, uh, we are, we're all sharing the same problem of how to manage all, all of this, uh, especially with regards to firearms. This is not unique to us. This is a statewide issue.
And the state imposing that thirty day completion deadline, when did that come into effect?
I'm not positive, but I believe it was twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two. Um, and what happens if we don't meet that deadline?
Um, what could happen is we could have a denial and Superior Court will, will reverse the denial just because we didn't meet the deadline.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Dixon, any other questions right now? I mean, it's not the only time, but anything else right now?
I'm gonna circle back.
Okay, Council Matitz.
Uh, well, some of the questions were asked. I think, you know, the numbers. Um, I, I think would help to, you know, support the cause. Um, you know, understand the patrol investor new, you know, Oprah requests, um. You know, I know they can be time consuming. Um, but I guess also how many? You know, do you get that? Require the level of detail. So I understand you're watching a lot of videos, making sure the officers are following the SOPs and, and for training purposes and. Yeah, but.
So any, any discovery requests or open requests, we have to watch. Um, that video or those videos in their entirety. Uh, anything in the prosecutor's office uh for discovery, anything for the court, um, or any open request. Um. My. Um, monthly reports, uh Lieutenant Lance, he usually does a breakdown monthly. Um, and there's usually in those monthly reports.
Um. And, and I guess, you know, just going circling back to, to animal control, um. I was a huge fan of, of the shared services in the beginning of this, but it sounds like it has taken a toll. And I'm looking at like, you know, the town contracts that we have with the various towns versus the salaries. For animal good for ACO officers, um, probably the training involved there, the maintenance of the vehicle. Uh, and the expenses, right, of caring for the animals. Looking at some of the bills and vouchers, you know, I know, uh, we have some significant vet bills there as well. Um, so that might be something we need to look for, you know, look going forward.
As of April first, um. We are, what we, what we kind of morphed into as we got towns, we have an account with Freedom Animal Hospital, but it's, it's our account. Um, what we kind of morphed into when we got all these other towns is we would take all of the animals to Freedom Animal Hospital. And the, the towns are responsible for. Uh, their vet bills. So if we get an animal from Sussex. That animal's bill is paid for Sussex. The problem that we were experiencing is, well, it's our, it's our account at Freedom. And sometimes other accountships aren't as good with their bills as we are, so we would uh be in, be delinquent. So, um, we tried doing a couple different things. Um, as of April first, I advised all the towns for the contract. Uh, that they're to find their own vet. Advise us who they're using and whatever animal we get from their town. We're gonna go to that vet and that's on them. So we're not delinquent in our account. So, um, the veterinary services are just for the town of New. I know you may see a couple higher bills. It's because they were, I know, all jumbled together. Um. I don't know if that answered that, that veterinary question.
I mean, that helps. Thank you. Um. Yeah, and like Matt, I probably should. I, I did look at some different things in the budget, but I didn't look at the website. I. Obviously, you know, historically, I know what the sergeants do, um. But it seems obviously a lot more in the past four years that I'm aware of, so.
So I think I'd like to know a little more about the restructure of the department when it happened last. What was the uh impetus for shrinking from three to ten to two? Um, the creation, the elimination of the traffic enforcement officer, um, the uh. I think it's mentioned, um. And I, I agree with the sentiment shared about animal control. I think we've had a lot of mission creep with animal control. Um, and I think it might be reasonable to take another look and explore whether or not it's more cost effective to shrink. The expense that we have, you know, there's a lot of discussion about administrative burden that has been placed by the animal control. And if we're looking to expand the budget, expand the size of the department, I think we first need to take a step back and look at. To see if there are any, you know, non-statutory administrative burdens that we can cut. Um, additionally, I think I gotta follow up on, you know, Matt's point. Um, and I know you mentioned that the budget can handle it, but we haven't discussed the actual cost. Um, we said the budget can absorb it, but we, we don't have any numbers and for us to think move forward with a decision to say yes or no, we need to know what that actual number is. Um. You also mentioned that you've explored, you know, other plans in trying to get to this one. So what are those alternatives? If this doesn't pass, if we say no, what's the backup plan? How are other departments handling this?
Um, so in, in exploring that, uh, the main department that kind of is, has went through what we are going through is Vernon.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Vernon had, um. A civilian kind of animal control supervisor. Um, they were met with challenges, uh, so to speak with that. I don't want to speak to, you know, what exactly happened there. But, um, they were met with, with difficulties even with that. Uh, they moved to uh having a sergeant as a main law enforcement officer. Uh, they have three full-time ACOs. Um, that pretty much cover all their on-call. So they're on, they're part-time only, they do uh shelter care and uh clean up uh in the shelter. Uh, some outreach stuff, but people that are handling the animal control calls are full-time, full-time people out there. Um, records clerk, uh, it, it is, it is a whole department. Um, and since that uh has taken place, it has been running very well and. It is one to model eventually. Um. So I think that was the deciding factor for me is how well that's working for Vernon and all the difficulties that they had in the past. Uh, I think just maybe we landed on this to kind of model this towards whatever.
Yeah, it's very similar and I think their, their administrative sergeant that oversees their animal control. Does all, does all good stuff. Very, very similar uh setup, uh, because just like every other department in the state, they're dealing with the same issues we are. And, um, you know, there, I'm sure they had the same conversations that we're having tonight. Um, that's what they settled on and that was a good solution for them. We did a site visit there. Uh, we've been in contact with them a lot. We went up there, we uh used some of their policies and procedures and different things to. Uh, model them as a best practice and all those things have been helpful. We don't have that uh type of administrative support that they have manpower wise. So, um, that worked out really well for them, um, having that administrative sergeant for not only getting the animal control things under control. But all of the other things that we're talking about, um, has been really beneficial for them, according to that.
Yes, I'm sorry. It, it just while we're on that topic, so in the Vernon model. Did this administrative sergeant, did he have his own administrative assistant or um to do?
Yeah, they have, they have, I think, an office manager that uh is at their front desk that handles all of the adoption applications. Um, handles all of the veterinary stuff. They have animal control officers that do the actual job in the field. They have uh people that work in the shelter to do all of the cleaning, things like that. So there's, there's a whole support staff. Uh, yes.
But are we looking for that support staff or are we just looking for the one person?
Right now, I'm looking for just the sergeant to oversee the ACO and then all those other, uh. All those other aspects. I'm not, I'm not asking for, you know, another administrative assistant. Um, is it something that we may need in the future?
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, but uh today I'm not, I'm not asking for any other. Uh, aspect for animal control other than have a supervisor of it. Cause there's, there, there is a supervision gap there. Um, you know. And I think this would, this would be part of that officer's job description. And he'd be able to supervise that along with the litany of things that, you know, we need to, um. Get help with.
Right, because the case you're making tonight is not just about the added for the ACO stuff. It's the other things.
But I do have another question because it says the police department of the town is hereby established in South and Sista. Uh, chief of police, a maximum, two police lieutenants, a maximum of six police sergeants and a maximum twenty police officers. But we were only talking about increasing the police officers by one, which would bring sixteen, but this is stating twenty.
Right, so uh what I was saying before was, um, by increasing that. Um, would give us, uh, let's just say Lieutenant Willansky is going to retire at the end of the year. And you guys approved us to put somebody in the academy in July to kind of get ahead of it. We would still, with, with, with those extra, a maximum amount of officers, we would, we would still be within the ordinance to do that. That's the only reason that we would add it from sixteen to twenty. And then again, or, and if the school walked in one day and said, hey, I want, I want two more SROs. Um. And we worked that out with the school, it would still fall within that maximum amount of officers. I'm not asking for four or five more officers.
But we not have to have this conversation then? You'd just be able to be open to add whatever you want, whenever you want, because now it's in the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm just saying like, if we add in the ordinance now, then we don't have to come back and do this again. We don't have this discussion. You can just kind of do whatever you want at that point. You can add what you want.
Well, it would, it would go through the proper channels all the time.
Right.
Um, but you know, if, if this came about at the end of the year, as in using his example of a retirement and needing to put somebody preemptively in the academy. To kind of shorten that six month training gap plus the field training and all that stuff. Um, then having that discussion, maybe revisiting discussion, a vote, introducing an ordinance change and all those things. You know, it's, it, just the process itself could be uh prohibitive from doing something that you, you decided, so.
Don't we do that now, it's working?
I'm sorry?
Don't we do that now and you, you said it's working?
Do now what? I'm sorry.
Send someone in.
You know, the challenge is we're not supposed to by law supersede the numbers in the ordinance. So we've done that because we've given them flexibility to hire people early. So that there's no gap in coverage in the town. So what we're trying to do is avoid that legal issue. By having a number that's greater than, which most towns will do, they'll set some sort of a maximum threshold. By ordinance so that you don't have to have a problem where somebody's retiring or you have mass retirements and then you exceed your ordinance, which you're not supposed to by law.
Yeah, it, it offers flexibility without any requirement.
So, I mean, you could add it to seventeen officers, but we would be at the max amount. If, if, if you approve the sergeant and the extra patrolman, we would be at the max amount of officers per, so we wouldn't be able to technically do that. Because we would have the, over the amount of, you can add it to seventeen officers, but as it states at sixteen. If we went, if we went forward with this and we put somebody in the academy in July for retirement, we would be beyond that, be beyond that ordinance.
Plus, if someone takes leave and they're still technically, they're on the books, now you have, now you're still.
All the perks is given, I mean, we would still have to, uh, you know, go. Uh, for the budget process to approve, you know, five more police officers. I mean, that's like. You know, a lot of mind we're talking about.
Exactly, that was my concern.
So it's like, it, it, you know, we wouldn't be able to just hire four officers because it said it's all, that's just the maximum amount.
But we can magically hire one because it's already in the budget.
It's not magic, it's a good plan.
The best discussion council. In fact, I feel like this was a little duplicitous because this was not discussed whatsoever.
This wasn't duplicitous, I present that. The money was in the budget, just like there's money in the budget for other positions in water sewer or public works. I'm bringing it to you for discussion, not for introduction, right? Which is the policy of the governing body to discuss the ordinances. We're having the conversation. You guys are looking for additional information, you carry the discussion. There, there's nothing wrong with that, but please. Don't say it was duplicitous because I've been here seventeen years. I don't do anything that's duplicitous.
Other questions? Other information that's needed, the information that you'd like to have? Some council members are doing in, in uh research on the fly, so I just want to make sure that we are providing opportunity. Uh, we're looking for more information to, to be able to ask that.
Um, Mr. Cruz, to go back to your question on the restructure. I can, clearly I wasn't in a position to know the ins and outs, but, um. We went from three lieutenants and four sergeants to. Uh, two lieutenants and five sergeants is when we used to have a detective lieutenant. Um, as our third lieutenant and that was moved to a detective sergeant's position to supervise the detective bureau. Um, I think at that point there was some, um. Uh, budgetary constraints and there uh was a way to save a little bit uh from having a detective lieutenant. Uh, to a detective sergeant. Um, I believe that we, um, lost the detective SRO uh through the school board who didn't want to fund that anymore. Um, so that was abolished. Um, and then the traffic officer. Um, I believe was um reassigned to the detective bureau after, um. A member of the police department was no longer with us and it just never got replaced.
So I restructured the police department about a decade ago. We didn't need three lieutenants in an organization of this size based on officers. So the governing body at that time accepted my recommendation, which is the current ordinance that's on it.
How much extra was included in the budget for this purpose?
Well, we have funds for the patrol position and then the additional, because obviously we're promoting them. Right, this is double by contract between the SOA contract for sergeant versus the candidate contract for patrol. So that's going by, and then we have the ability to handle all the officers.
Like, how much?
I can give you the number of top step patrolmen and sergeants.
Yeah, you have a, yeah.
Um, in two thousand and twenty-five, it is. One thirty-seven, eight, top step patrolman to one forty-four, seven.
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand.
Oh, it's an entry level patrolman.
Forty, forty, forty-four.
There's your.
Tom Ferry, did you have answers that Councilman Cruz was looking for by any chance? Tom Ferry, did you have answers that Councilman Cruz was looking for by any chance?
Sorry.
Do you, do you have any other information that Councilman Cruz was looking for by any chance?
I mean, so the additional amount that he is gonna get paid will be charged to the animal control or the ACO um. Uh line items for the uh share, for the shared service.
And the additional patrol?
That will come out in a minute.
Regular budget. And actually, probably is gonna be more than seven thousand dollars. I base. Salary wages for the animal control officers themselves, the part timers, based on a proration of the total. Of shared service and I allocate the other expenses and this in the salary wages. Uh to the shared services based upon that, that formula, so chances are it's gonna be a little more. And I can also absorb some into the uh the regular animal control trust account.
No, keep in mind, we're already in March, so we're not getting the full year, please don't decide.
Did your redaction services can be outsourced?
I don't believe so.
I think the, the service, the service of the actual redaction, you can have a company do the actual modification to the file. However, the police department has to review the evidence and. Take notes of, okay, I need this, I need it discovered, I need this muted, et cetera, and so it's not a complete just outsource. Uh it's simply modification of the media file.
Would it be possible, yeah, would it be possible to kind of break down the workload? Both structured with having someone do the entire job versus splitting it out. Again, just trying to see if we can defray some of these administrative burdens elsewhere. Before we approach the expansion.
Is someone keeping um?
Yeah, my.
Track of the, the requests. Okay, any other questions or requests for information from council?
Yeah, my question is for you to.
Councilman Cruz? Deputy Mary Dixon? Councilwoman Teets?
I'm good for now, thank you.
All right, uh anything else from either of you? All right, Mister Russo, you wanna?
So.
Recap?
Yeah, so we're looking for the number of the firearms applications, maybe you look at history on that. And others review the footage or the opportunity to split the costs into MBRs, body worn cameras outsourced a portion of it, save on cost. Probably helpful to know how many Oprahs, right, that should be part of the conversation. Getting smaller and dispatch and ACO, I mean, that's a policy decision. Can't get smaller in dispatch because we have to manage that twenty-four seven. So I'm gonna remove that one, but ACO, that's a policy decision of the governing body. If you wanna eliminate. The shared service contracts at the end of this year, obviously, we would still have animal control for newly, but that's up to all of you. Um we'll confirm just the base salary PBA for the new officer, assuming the entry level and then sergeant salary. What that um number is in the SOA contract, so we can just find those.
On the ACO item, I think within the past year or so, we have a breakdown present choice of. Costs and such of what ACO is currently costing us, very similar.
I also noted from um Deputy Mary Dixon, so the increased number of firearms applications. Um I think he asked the question, can anyone review the footage? I know. Would some of the redaction can be outsourced and we have to review everything, but does, does it have to be a certain level?
Gotta be supervised.
Has a supervi- has to be a supervisor to review footage, okay? Um and then I think you also asked for an overview of the leadership responsibilities, but I believe you found that on the website.
I mean, chief, tenants, not really sergeants, or sergeant.
Okay, so we would like some information with regards to areas of responsibility for the sergeants. So on the website are the chief and the lieutenants. Go ahead.
Is there a um department uh like breakdown or shows like the sergeants, I'm, I'm just trying to think which one you're looking at. So next to each sergeant bubble should have some sort of uh re- other responsibilities other than. Uh supervising the shift. That, that, that it's added on them.
The issue with. You could just get this for me or I may have to try to navigate through the, the website.
Yes, I just didn't know if you were looking at it.
Um we'll pull it to that.
Yeah.
Sergeant's responsibility, obviously, the type of. All right, so we'll carry this for the next meeting, mayor, if that's okay.
Uh good for the council? Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, the discussion from the chief um was the fee order.
I was just gonna say, we only did half of the gap conversation, all right?
Yeah, we had discussed this, there was some questions about. Animal control fees, I know the chief had looked into some of the data. I think everything else seemed pretty pathetic. I mean, fees and such, but in the escrow, I think the council had initially this, we wanted to see. Chief could provide any additional information on ACO.
Yes.
If you can move forward with the fee ordinance uh introduction.
So I think the last, how we left it was a kind of a daily breakdown of cost. Uh I think that was the main question uh for the councils um and the. Estimated daily cost to run our uh shelter. Impound facility, however you wanna call it, is roughly around fifty-six dollars fifty cents a day. Um that's not including labor costs, that's supplies, that's the vet. Tractor supply, Amazon, Abbey Glen, Newton Vet, ACO clothing, uh vehicle maintenance, uh Home Depot. That kind of stuff, it's um, you, you know, not including. Uh electric to the building, you know, just the, the, the cost that I spend out uh daily. Uh on average, uh is fifty-six fifty a day to run the, the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Um so I think that main question stems from um what we were gonna uh. Charge for a destruction or surrender fee um. The expenses for any uh intention of an animal, I was kind of looking for a range. Um and I think we had a conversation about that, um so I'm let you wanna dive back into that.
Well, you said a range in the new proposal, did you set the uh the range looking for us to tell you what range it's, what number it should be?
What if you're okay with a range or um, you know, leave it as is or, you know, uh. If you wanna do a different number, um I, me personally, I would like a range. Um I think every situation is kind of different, um and to have, having that range, I think would be beneficial to the residents. Um but that's just me personally, um I'm, I'm all, I'm all for whatever you guys want.
We had discussed this previously, I had mentioned my uh discontent with the minimum being sent for the case of an individual and. I don't think my perspective has changed on that, so I, I would support the removal of the minimum.
Other thoughts on that?
I think you have to have some type of a minimum because otherwise um. People have a tendency to take advantage of situations and we, I think there should be some type of minimum. For taking care, I mean, I have, I have a cat and I know how much the cat costs um to feed it, to take care of it. So I think if we're going to be housing it for somebody, there should be some type of a minimum to cover the expenses of what you are incurring. That's, I mean, I know how much my pussy cat cost me and I think there should be some type of a minimum to cover our cost.
So I thought one, one maybe concept to that is the individual who. Had a prolonged period where they were unable to collect the animals for whatever reason, don't have the means of paying that fee. But are willing to take the cat or dog away from police department so we don't continue to incur fees.
I thought you meant about the housing.
No, it's for the structure or so, I'd see one.
Yeah.
The other recommendation was one fifty minimum, three fifty max.
So when I look at it, look, I'm in the hospital for however long, I've got crazy medical bills, I'm not well up to begin with. This is my animal, this is my child in some cases, I can't afford to pay the thousand dollars that has been accrued. Because it's per day, I was in the hospital for however long, you're still housing this, I will gladly take my animal back. I can't afford the pickup fee, but if I don't take that animal back, you still have to pay for it. Down still has base, I'm the one to take, I will demonstrate, I'll give you my financials, I will demonstrate, I can't pay for this animal, but I'll take it off.
So that brings up a interesting point, right, JP, because then what are, what's the criteria for not being able to afford? The fee, right, and then, and then who reviews, who, what's the dis- the deciding entity for reviewing?
So I.
Ability or not?
I would say the same question exists as it was, who decides if it's twenty-five, who decides if it's fifty? Why can't it just be zero or fifty?
And I think this was the discussion, right, that we had several months ago, I, was that with you or chief in?
No, valid point, I mean, like, you know, um.
Either way, you're still spending some sort of discretion up because there is a range.
Right.
Why not just drop that range for the person who truly can't pay?
Right.
And that's not to say that anyone will meet that criteria, it's still an option that today.
Right, so that, so that's what, I, I mean, let's say we are in favor of having an and or situation, right? What's, what is the criteria? I mean, is it, and who's, who's the determining factor or the determining, the decision maker? I mean, is it not to exceed, is it timeframe, is it?
Well, maybe, maybe turn this back on you, chief, if you ask for a range.
Yeah.
How would you like to, how are you intending that to be?
So, I would look at the personal circumstance, you know, like, one, one for example is we had a. Um a veteran fall ill and he was in hospital for maybe two weeks. Um at the schedule, it was um a hundred dollars. For the first day that we had his animal and fifty dollars a day for each, each day. So do the math, it was a lot of money. Um I just think we should be able to have a range. To charge somebody a minimum or charge somebody an excellent. If it's somebody that says, hey, you got my animal, I ain't coming. I think we should charge on the maximum and I know, I know we're, we're getting to the uh, the, the haves and the have nots. But at the end of the day, this is somebody's animal and they're responsible for it. And the townspeople shouldn't have to foot the bill um for. Their uh their mishaps.
And I know the council has discussed this in other aspects as well over the years. I know people have come, uh you know. That have experienced, let's say, a house fire and they're not in their house, but they're still required to pay the property taxes, they're having a tough time. Um do the other taxpayers absorb that or do they stay responsible for those things? I mean, it's, it's not a great question to have to answer. Um but and, you know, every, every taxpayer has, has a struggle to some degree and. There's a cost every day that, that an animal is there for it to be cared for and fed and taken to the vet, all those different things, so um that somebody is paying for it at the end of the day. So, you know, I know it's been discussed in other circumstances as well uh with kind of similar themes, but. Um and I think you might get different answers from different people. Yeah, so what's the most appropriate, but you know, the chief is right, there are some people that will just say, you know. Uh so sorry, you know, give, give the belt to the, to the taxpayers. Um but and it could be a situation where somebody wants their animal back, like, okay, take it back and we'll stop accruing things. But you'll get a bill from the town that, you know, how we collect that eventually is kind of a, you know, another topic, but um. I agree that if somebody wants to get their, their animal back, we wanna get it out of the, out of the impound facility and back to, there's no, there's no benefit to us to, to keep this here, so.
So C one, I mean, if you took the minimum and max, when you took the mean, uh you're looking at two fifty, right, if you were thinking of not having a minimum and max. Is that what you're?
Yeah, we already have that, but right now it's three hundred.
It's three hundred, right, I see, yeah.
Trying to get away from just one and I'm trying to have the range.
So, eh like, the thing that stuck out to me when I saw it was uh this surrender of any dog. Or cat at the request of the owner. I can't take care of my dog, I am gonna give you three hundred dollars. Maybe reasonable, but I can't take care of my cat, it's three hundred dollars, like, I think there should be some sort of range. You know, I think they're two different animals, no pun intended, but having that one set. Thing, I think it's a little, it's a little tough.
And if they're saying they can't take care of their animal and we're like, okay, paying is three hundred.
Right.
Like, they could have used that three hundred to take care of their.
Right, right, so I think having that, that hundred to three fifty, okay, if I'm gonna give you. Uh a cat, oh yeah, maybe that's a hundred dollar uh fee, but if I'm gonna give you a great game, no, that's probably a three fifty. You, you know, and I think uh, you know, uh we would be within our realm if we have the ordinance. Uh whoever's supervising the animal control, make that decision and be able to document. It's not like calling favors, it's, it's within the ordinance and we're gonna, this is, this is our decision.
Discretion, yeah, based on the situation. Um Councilman Diglio, did you also have questions regarding the adoption fees? I feel like there was a question.
Think we have been pretty much set right in there.
Yeah, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think D was um agreed upon.
Yeah, okay, okay.
That was a good point.
Okay.
So, just so I can get this straight from all the conversation, um we literally take animals in for people that. Have to go to the hospital or.
Sometimes, so sometimes, let's say, yeah, let's say we go to a, a house fire.
Mm-hmm.
Right, they get hospitalized, oh, the animals are running around, that's our responsibility. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna hold them until somebody can come get them. Usually, we find a family member and they come get them and it's. You know, maybe if, if it's, if it's quick, we don't even charge the, the hundred dollars, just come get your animal.
Right.
But, you know, if it's a day or two, then we charge the, the initial hundred and, you know, uh fifty dollar pickup fee.
And no, we don't take care of them when people go on vacation, let's not put that out there, that, no. Yeah, we're not a boarding service.
That's gonna happen, and eventually it's gonna happen.
Yeah, like I'm going away for ten days, like.
Yep.
Yeah, it'd be cheaper to have you guys take care of little fluffy than me.
Yeah, and I think I've experienced it recently, you know, people that we have their dog and we want them to come get it. Nah, nah, I know.
Yeah, I'm busy.
Yeah, I got, I got too much going on right now. I mean, it happens, I'm just telling you, it, so it's a legitimate point on both sides, I think, you know.
Does that to go back to Verden or sound like, but does Verden have a fee structure?
What, what, what that is, I don't know, but yes, they have a fee structure um. Again, that sergeant, that's a humane law enforcement officer, will literally bring out the, like, the law and. Eh, okay, you're not gonna come get, get your animal, well, we're gonna charge you with uh neglect. He can do that, our animal control can't.
Right, that's a good point.
Right.
But if we put this ordinance through, they will be able to?
If we put sergeant through with a humane law, law enforcement officer, yes.
The animal control officer does not have.
You know, I asked this earlier, what's, what's the training for that, like?
Um we, we already have somebody that eh um.
Sorry.
Well, that's a good point, that didn't come up yet before.
Yeah.
What is the addition, like?
It's a, it's a week training.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, but it's gotta be a sworn law enforcement officer with this additional training, it can't be just a civilian.
No, I guess.
It's a police officer.
So when they restructured, the whole ASPCA went away, it fell on local law enforcement to train somebody. What local law enforcement really does with it is a whole nother portion, but I would like hours to. Enforce the laws that need to be done, you know.
Twilight says. All right, any questions regard, regarding the proposed fee structure?
So where, where are we at?
That was my next question.
Open to doing a, a range, but I'm honestly fine with how it is presented too, so if that's what the, the majority says, I'm, I'm fine with just. Going with what's here, but if we're dead set on that, arrange.
Okay.
So I, I think I would be remiss if I did not provide example to support. Maybe six or seven years ago, there was a homeless individual who had taken a residence in memory park. Became a drain on our services, consistently requesting EMS. Consistently causing what some may constitute a nuisance on Spring Street. And after the umpteenth time of dealing with the individual and responding and transporting them. I asked the question, what do you need? How can we help? What can we do? And his response was, I just want my dog and I will move on. We went through the process of getting in touch with his vet in Rockaway. Obtaining the necessary paperwork to allow this individual to gain access to their dog. And they moved on. All the individual wanted was their dog, they didn't have the means to get their dog. This is why I support a zero fee possibility.
So if you were to write C one, Councilman Kuz, what would that say? At the request of the owner, colon. But that's the discretion, sorry. So put no men, right? Is that what you're saying, just?
Really?
Not to exceed.
The first day for number two, P two, we start heads not to exceed a hundred dollars for the first day. We feasibly could charge that person. But we also could charge that person a hundred dollars and someone's still making a discretionary decision. As to how much that person's getting charged. But by having a minimum, you are now locking someone in, otherwise. Could be on their way with their dog.
I'm not.
Any opposition to that?
I'm not opposed to that. It, it, it gives me the range regardless.
Yeah.
But it's from zero to three fifty.
It might never be implemented, but it's still there if it has, right?
Or you could, you could, like I said, you could have a, a discretionary means of collecting, like, okay, you owe us a hundred dollars.
Right.
We're gonna mail you a bill and you have ninety days to pay it, and if you don't pay it in ninety days. Mail you another bill, like, it could be a discretionary, you know, in terms of, you're not off the hook for it, but. Which is, we're not, we're not gonna, you know, put a lien on your house for the hundred bucks either, you know, like, it's a, there's discretion there as well, I think.
To your point, Mr. Goose, I'm not keeping somebody's dog.
Right.
Yeah, we want, we want to return those dogs.
Los Angeles, I think a lot of the person is kind of de facto overseeing, well, not de facto, directly overseeing ECO now, any?
No, I think, I, I, I believe everybody's point of view is legitimate, everybody has legitimate concerns. Um, you know, I think that there is the uh, the need for discretion in some ways. Um, in terms of whether it's a zero minimum or a. Hey, discretionary is how, how aggressively we're gonna try to collect this eventually. Um, you know, there should be some discretion because every case is different. Um, I don't know that. Introducing that much discretion wouldn't be taken advantage of either by some people and end up um. Just simply shifting the cost to the taxpayers, so I think there should be a happy medium personally, and I think that um. The discretion is probably allowing discretion in one or both of those manners is probably the best solution that we could probably come up with.
Okay, so if we, if we wrote um, at the request of the owner, not to exceed three hundred and fifty max. And then for the next one, says not to exceed a hundred dollars for the first day. And not to exceed fifty dollars for additional days, you'd be okay with that? I would be okay with that, cause that gives me my range.
Deputy Mayor Dixon? Townsworm Teets?
Yep, I think it's good, and if you, you know, if you start collecting the data on what you do charge those fees for the next year.
Right.
You know, that. I mean, we could always revisit if the fees aren't working out, but.
They'll be in the reports.
Some historic, yeah.
Mr. Russo, any?
No, so we'll make the two changes for C one, C two, and we'll hang this on for the next meeting.
Yep, okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for Chief Danville or Lieutenant People? John, anything for us, anything else?
Okay, that was it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, two, three.
Okay, so uh, you guys will get back to us with the information that was requested and. We'll resume the conversation in the next meeting.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to uh, item nine, unfinished business. This is with regards to resolution ninety one dash twenty twenty five. Mr. Russo, you were handed some information, have you had the opportunity to take a look at that?
Yeah, there's two estimates, one from pro one construction, one from cost of construction, those are just. Proposals for work to be done, and the other is just generic information about. An application made for, with Provident Bank, but there's no proof of loan or anything that's. Current.
And that.
It's just a loan request information.
Okay, and that, uh, the estimates, cause I believe the homeowner said that they were applying for mortgage for two hundred thousand dollars, was the.
If, if they're added together, it's about three hundred thousand.
On the estimates. Done, okay, um, so the, uh. Tom, can you recap from the last meeting, uh, the council was asked to consider um, an extension of sorts uh. To allow for the homeowners to work on uh, getting the funds and some additional information. Um, to this meeting, um, in addition to that, uh. There was additional information that was given to the council from our construction official.
Yes.
Okay. And photos, et cetera. So the conversation before the council is, do we have any additional questions or? Conversation to be had before. We act on resolution ninety one dash twenty twenty five.
I mean, last month's meeting, the, the last meeting we had, the. Cowards had requested thirty days, I was going to provide thirty days, it hasn't.
We had to act on the bid before then.
Before the twenty four.
Right, we don't have time on that. Docket per se, based on our, the cadence of our meetings to wait until the next council meeting.
Unless we have a special meeting.
And my question would be, what? Would change?
They were given a thirty day timetable by the bank. As with thirty days.
Um, I, I assume we incur an expense if we have to. Request for proposals again, if the, the proposals for the, for the demolition. Are they going to expire?
Well, we have sixty days to award, I can ask Sean if he can check with a little bidder for an extension, but I can't guarantee. Obviously, that don't be amenable.
Right.
We really don't have a basis to reject, unless, you know, the project's not gonna go through, obviously, but. Projects going through, we should do the award. First question is, what does the majority want to do, carry or award? If the goal is to carry. Carry it to the next meeting and I'll talk to Sean just to see where we're at with the sixty days. Tight, but maybe to get into that meeting night, you know, roughly. Um, maybe we have to ask for an extension.
What's the, when is the thirty day um, that the, the cowards are supposed to hear from Provident? When is that, what is that date? Mr. and Mrs. Coward, do you know when you're supposed to have your commitment from the bank by?
No, I don't, we went up on February twenty first.
And then he told you thirty days?
Yeah, she said.
March twenty first.
About thirty days.
March twenty first would be the day.
No, cause February doesn't have three days. One, two, three, four, the twenty first is twenty eight days, February's a short one. The twenty third is thirty days. There, which is a Sunday. So the latest day presumably would be the twenty fourth. Mr. Kuz, is that your um, position?
I think that we are in a position where the property owners have. As far as I can tell, made good faith intent to try to resolve this issue, they've provided estimates, they've attempted to secure funding. And I think with this tight of a deadline, I wouldn't want to see that then come through after we award a demolition. I think I wouldn't be able to sleep at night if I moved or taken property away from someone who is going through the right steps. And I understand that there's some. Difficulty in the background of this and the history of it, but it sounds as if individuals who are here. Very recently came into title on the property, I don't know who owned it or who it was titled to before, but. You know, without knowing the expanse of the history of the ownership of this property, it sounds like they're doing everything they can to try to save this.
Okay, Councilman Diglio?
I agree with JP on this one. I just don't have the heart to take somebody's property away without giving them the full opportunity. To, to secure the money that could possibly save your home, I wouldn't want it done to me.
Councilman Teets?
Yeah, I think I, I would go along with that, but I just want to make sure that Mr. and Mrs. Coward realize, you know, like, that's. Two weeks from today, we, we kind of need to know what, where we're going.
I would call your bank every day and say, this is what's on the table, we need an answer.
Deputy Mayor Dixon? I know, we have three, okay.
Um, I don't know, I was just, I was, I was reading over the report from the. Back, back in November, it was imminent.
What's happened since then?
Since then, yeah, that's my only concern with continuing, I mean, obviously. One hundred percent sympathetic for the, the situation and their plight that they're in, but that's my only concern.
And I absolutely see Mr. Budo's.
Yeah, cause I was reading through all that, that was in November.
Mm-hmm.
Worrying where we are now.
This has been going on for quite a while.
Yeah, even if they give, is it gonna be? Solid at this point.
Well, and that's, that is, quite frankly, that is one of my concerns as well, is um, if, even if Mr. and Mrs. Coward were able to obtain a loan from Provident Bank. Um, is, is it going to be enough to salvage, to salvage the, the house, right? But um, again, that's not our decision to make, um. So Mr. and Mrs. Coward, you know. Just to reiterate. We're up against the clock, um, and we're. Gonna have little to no option on March twenty first, twenty fourth, if this is carried. Um, but to award um, the resolution ninety one dash twenty twenty five. Unless that funding comes through, um, and. Quite frankly, contract and measurable steps have been moved forward to. Begin to mitigate the issues that exist on the property. Um, so as Councilman Koo said, uh, whatever you can do. Every day to be contacting the bank, and then at the same time, um, some contingency planning around, okay, if that comes through. If there's a, a gap, which is why I asked um, Mr. Russo what that uh, um. Estimate was, because I think that you had said at the last meeting that you were applying for one number, that seems to be less than. The estimates to do the work, and so, you know, just making sure that whatever is going to be needed to bridge the two is also in place. Um, because we have a um, health and safety concern here, um, with the. The status of the building and, you know, I was thinking about your property when we had the extraordinary winds. Over the last week, um, and what potential. Issue that could create for the neighbors and for people that might be around with, you know, the property. Potentially continuing to um, have bricks fall and other, you know, structural issues, so. Um, Mr. Russo, is there anything that you add to the advice that we're trying to give the cowards at this point?
No, I would just ask that whatever information they come up with should be provided to the town attorney and town manager because. If there's something I catch or Dominic or Eric, it might be a moot point, you know, I mean, it has to go through. And probably Joe Budo too.
Joe Budo.
Yeah, you know, so it's. It's gotta be vetted, it can't be, we come here the night of the twenty fourth, here's the information that can't do that.
And I, and I agree with that as well, I mean, I know that you presented some documents tonight, but. We really need to have whatever it is that you have prior to the March twenty fourth meeting. Um, so, you know, to get that information from Mr. Russo, um, Mr. Budo, our counsel.
What, they need to have confirmation by Friday, the twenty first.
Okay, by Friday, the twenty first, um, actually, I would suggest that perhaps calling Mr. Russo's office on that date. Um, to give him an update or a status on whatever information that you have at that point, uh, because that is correct, we, uh, we will need to know.
Yeah, by the twenty first.
Our ability or what we're gonna be doing to proceed. On the twenty fourth, because I think thirty days from February twenty first is Sunday, the twenty third. Did someone check my math on that? Yeah.
Cause there's an issue with the contract award.
Yeah. But which, you know, we can work through somehow, but. If the information's presented that night, it doesn't do the council any good, it's gotta get vetted through three channels before we can make a recommendation. So.
So, so Tom, if you were to get any information on the twenty first, is that one workday enough, you know?
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
I mean, Dominic can let Eric know that it would come down the pike, obviously, I'll, I'll make myself available and then I just have to let Joe know.
And also, uh, in the interim, you're gonna be reaching out to Mr. Canning about.
Yeah.
The other timelines issues, the extended.
Possible extension or just.
Okay.
Mr. Russo Coward, do you, do you have any questions?
I, I was just going to say, I mean, I, I know we have a, another public later, but certainly if you had, please approach the microphone if you have any questions about. Anything that we've discussed or questions that we've asked.
Now, right now, I'm just thinking, I'm just sitting here thinking, if we can't get the, um, like, the loan or whatever, right? If the loan doesn't go through and you demolish it, who's gonna pay for that?
Town pays for it, and then we take you to Superior Court to get reimbursed for the costs associated with the demolition. Cause we can't have the taxpayers of the town pay for the demolition of the building. We pay for the company to do the work. But we can't put a lien on the property, so then we'd have to go to court.
Do you have Mr. Russo's contact information?
Yeah. I have. You know, we've spoken.
While you're processing that, though, we do have another uh, public session, um, so we'll move forward with the rest of the agenda. Quickly and then uh, come back to see if there's any additional questions, uh, all right, so. Uh, no action tonight on resolution ninety one dash twenty twenty five.
Do motion second, roll call to carry it.
Okay.
March twenty fourth.
Do I have a motion to carry?
We'll make the motion to carry it to March twenty fourth.
Do I have a second?
Awesome.
I have a motion to carry resolution ninety one dash twenty twenty five to the March twenty fourth meeting. The motions were made, Councilman Diglio, and a second by Councilman Kuz, please roll call.
Mr. Kuz? Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Laquah?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to ordinances, we have introduction of ordinance twenty twenty five dash five, this is a bond ordinance providing a supplemental appropriation of seven million. Two hundred and ten thousand dollars for various sewer improvements in and by the town of Newton. In the county of Sussex, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of seven million, two hundred and ten thousand dollars of bonds or notes. Of the town for financing part of the appropriation. Anything additional, Mr. Russo, to note on this?
No, I don't know if you wanted Alani or Tom, just to give the thirty thousand foot view on it.
So not your full presentation, Alani, at this point, but um, go ahead.
So I'll, I'll be brief, cause she, uh, Alani's gonna talk about this in detail, basically. Um, this is a supplement to an ordinance that we already had in place, uh, two thousand and twenty three dash eleven. Um, that original amount.
Was share, it's the first page of my handout, is the summary of this ordinance, so it's. Just to guide you through what was there before Tom's time, twenty twenty three dash eleven ordinance was introduced to cover the. Sum of one, two, three, four, five projects. Uh, one being sewer repairs that was estimated at one million dollars. Pump station consolidation, which is a Marion pump station improvements, uh, estimated at that time at one point three million dollars. Um, what stands for cause one is construction project one of three under the loan application, that's why it's all in the one group. Waste water treatment plan, chemical room upgrades, estimated at that time, three hundred and. Wastewater Treatment Plan Chemical Room upgrades estimated at that time, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. The wastewater treatment plant sand filters estimated at that time at six hundred and fifty thousand. And the wastewater treatment plan transfer switch replacement generator estimated then at a hundred and forty thousand. The reality of these costs are the dollars below it where it says projected costs. Now that design is finalized across all the projects, we have a more probable cost estimate from your professionals. The one million went up to three point four. The one point three went up to one point seven eight five. Chemical room went from three seventy-five to eight forty-eight. The sand filters went from six fifty to two point five. And your generator went from one forty to two point one. The reason these were underestimated are various. Inflation is one of them. The size of the generator was underestimated. We went from a three hundred kilowatt to a five hundred kilowatt generator that is also going to be equipped to handle the future improvements of the wastewater treatment plant. Um, so obviously, we don't want to put good money on bad. We're not replacing it in kind. Um, we stand by the, uh, professionals' recommendation on the generator amounts and the sand filters. The chemical room is pretty much, uh, similar to what we anticipated to see from the water treatment plant that was already awarded. So that is a justifiable increase. Um, I can't speak to what was estimated in two thousand and twenty-three, but we can justify the cost estimates that are presented to us in two thousand and twenty-five. So having said that, the delta is in in red that I presented to Tom with the net difference of seven point two million dollars, six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. And for the sake of, uh, rounding it up, we just went up from seven two oh six, seven sixty-six to seven two one zero.
The blue, uh, sewer repairs, if you look on the bottom, uh, that's gonna be principal of that principal forgiveness of two million dollars. If you look at the red, which is under the, uh, transfer switch and generator, that's another, uh, two million dollars. The, the blue is state fiscal year twenty-five. And the, the purple or the
Usha.
Usha.
Thank you.
Fiscal year twenty-six.
Is, uh,
Another
Fiscal year two twenty-six is another two million dollars.
So at the bottom, I have the net sum of the total appropriation of funds between the two ordinances. They would add up to ten point six seven five
Mm-hmm.
Million. Four million dollars will be forgiven through principal forgiveness through the two state fiscal years. Your balance for financing will be six point six seven five, given your criteria as affordability tier two. Five million of that will be borrowed at zero interest. One point six will be borrowed at the I Bank's grandfather triple A market rate. So if your market rate interest is double A Moody's rating, let's say.
Double A plus.
Double A plus, you would still get a lower interest rate because the I Bank has a triple A market rate that's grandfather to all, um, financing recipients. So it's still a very lucrative package to proceed with, because if you're advancing these projects, um, you would be looking at five million dollars. That's remain ten million in total. Five million borrowed at no interest and one point six borrowed at the triple A market rate and four million forgiven. Now, in my presentation, I will also speak to that, the DPW staff is not necessarily eager in prioritization of these as much as Florida Avenue Pump Station. We see that and we recognize that. Thank you. Well, we just want to make sure that we secure the money for the projects that are ready to be shovel-ready. And these are cutting the line to get the approvals that we need from the state. If I wait for Sparta Avenue to be ready for bid, I'm gonna lose twenty-five and twenty-six funding. Because we don't see that ready until twenty-seven. Fiscal year twenty-seven, which puts us to about twelve to sixteen months from now. Don't panic. We'll, we'll get there.
And Lady basically puts all this information into H two O after the D E P approves everything, which is a uh, it's mind-boggling. I couldn't even do it. So that's the reason why she is sitting next to me, um, to be putting all this information in, to line all this stuff up, to order all the projects, to make sure all are ducks in a row. It's very time-consuming. Just last week, we had six hours worth of Zoom meetings between me and her. It's taken up all my time. And hers too.
Six hours is not all.
At least. Right?
No.
Um, but, but by the way, um, Phoenix just came out with their monthly report for last and bonds and notes are pretty much going off at the same amount. Um, the ones that are bank-qualified are a little less, but you're talking almost three seven five. You know, three point seven five to, to do a bond sale, um, uh, in, in five million at zero percent. I mean, you can't beat that.
Okay, so just getting back to the ordinance before we get too far down into the presentation. Any questions of Tom?
Sandy. My one concern is that pump station.
Mm-hmm.
Because that pump station has been going now since two thousand nineteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Sparta?
Yeah, the Sparta. This doesn't touch.
Nope, nope. This is making us whole for projects that were already appropriated for spending that the estimates that were provided at that time are not enough. Sparta Avenue has a bond ordinance that should cover the costs that are projected for that. So we're not throwing more money on Sparta Avenue with this ordinance. This is to cover the sewer repairs. The pump station, Miriam Pump Station.
Where is the Miriam Pump Station?
Where is the Miriam Pump Station?
At the Mary.
If you enter on the side where their new gym is, you'll see this big silver box.
Mm-hmm.
That's the controls, the pump station's underground.
Okay, so we're not talking about that well over on Gardner.
No.
No, no, this is wastewater. This is all sewer, and that's why the first page on my handout is telling you the projects that it's covering.
Okay.
Pump station consolidation is what was written in the original ordinance. It's really Mer- Miriam Pump Station improvements, the wastewater treatment plant chemical room, wastewater treatment plant sand filters and the transfer switch and generator for the wastewater treatment plant.
Now, remember, if it's sore, you get two million a year. If it's sore, you get two million a year.
It's sewer water.
Two million. If it's water, it's two. It's a total, yes.
Okay.
Yep. You said sewer.
Yeah.
I did.
Yeah, you just want to make sure we heard it.
Sorry, yes. And actually, general capital, the, um, the drainage on the Bay Blue Field and the equipment.
We're gonna get to that.
And that's general capital.
Yes.
And that goes down.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so with regards to, uh, introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five.
I'll introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five.
Have a second?
A second.
Twenty twenty-five dash five. I have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five by Deputy Mayor Dixon and a second by Councilwoman Teets. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes, so the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five will be held on Monday, March twenty-fourth at seven o'clock or as soon as thereafter as the matter may be heard. Okay. Next up, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six. This is an ordinance providing funding for Memory Park Connector Boardwalk Project for the town of Newton and appropriating three hundred and three, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars and twenty-four cents for such purpose. Tom, any other background on this?
So this one is a grant, um, we already have a grant for seven hundred and
Forty-nine.
Thank you, um, which was put in general capital as a fully funded ordinance. So this one is another fully funded ordinance, just adding to it, so there's no debt involved whatsoever. So I just left it, being that the first one was in general capital as a bond ordinance, I just piggybacked off of that other one and put it in that way, too.
Okay, we like that. Any questions? All right, a motion to introduce?
I'll make the motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six.
Awesome.
I have a motion to introduce by Councilwoman Diglio, second by Councilmember Kuss. Councilmember Kuss, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes, so this will also, the public hearing for this ordinance will also be held on Monday, March twenty-fourth. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Mr. Russo, can you run through the?
Sure. First one supports legal notices on official government websites. Ninety-six is a refund. Ninety-seven is a resolution to accept ADA improvements to Duma, Duma Valley View and Babett. Ninety-eight is an award for HFE Services LLC disclosure contract. Municipal Alliance is ninety-nine, compensation for non-union employees, one hundred. Sewer Improvement Project Professional Engineering Services, one oh one, amendment to sewer, uh, capital budget, one oh two. Temporary capital budget Memory Park Boardwalk Connector Amendment, one oh three, one oh four is the aforementioned redevelopment plan, state plan with the county, and one oh five is bills and vouchers.
Any resolutions that need further discussion or to be removed by council?
I just have a question on resolution one hundred. When we talk about non, uh, covered employees, they're not covered by the collective bargaining. I believe when we did the, the budget, we were planning on what, two point something increase?
Yep.
Is that what we're referring to or is this in addition to?
No, it's in the second paragraph. It's the two point two. This codifies what we budgeted.
Okay, that's what I wanted to double check.
Any other questions, discussion, anything to be removed? All right, can I have a motion on the consent agenda, please? Yes, so we, do we need to pull it off then? Okay, so we're going to remove resolution one hundred dash twenty twenty-five from the consent agenda, um, and Kat will have that for a separate uh, uh, separates.
Oh, yeah.
So. Okay, other than that, then, anything else, Mr. Kuss? Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda except for resolution one hundred?
I will make the motion for, uh, the consent agenda with the removal, uh, for separate votes for resolution one hundred.
Have a second? All right, I have a motion on the consent agenda to approve by Councilwoman Diglio, second by Deputy Mayor Dixon. Uh, roll call vote, please, Kat.
Mr. Kuss?
An extension on checks one two six four two, one two six seven two, one two seven zero seven. Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes. All right, so we have, uh, resolution one hundred dash twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion on resolution one hundred.
A motion to approve?
Oh, sorry, yes, one hundred, yes, twenty twenty-five, sorry. Uh, do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
All right, I have a motion to approve resolution one hundred dash twenty twenty-five by Councilwoman Teets and a second by Councilwoman Diglio. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, um, do I call Mr. Kuss or no?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kuss?
I'd say.
Okay. Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes. Thank you. All right, uh, we're at item twelve on the agenda. This is the second open to the public. Um, anyone in person that would like to make a comment, additional comment? Okay, Mr. Perry, I thought you were jumping up to the microphone. Yeah, would, any further comments?
No.
Okay. Okay, Tom, do we have anybody online still? Okay, go ahead.
Ludmilla Macash, do you hear me?
We do.
Okay, great. Uh, let's start first with the last one because I didn't understand, did you authorize compensation or you did not authorize compensation? That is basically you moved that on, you agreed with that, that's number one. Number two, uh, I don't know if the chief, uh, of the police is still there. Uh, if not, I'll say what I have to say. I read, I, I heard him, uh, with a lot of attention out there. And of course, if he's anyone who really supports the police, it's me. But since he brought several things out there, I'd like to, um, uh, to make you guys maybe informed, in case if you are not informed, there were several thi- uh, things that he brought out there. When it comes to the module about Vernon, about Vernon, you cannot compare, so just in case if you do not know, Newton versus Vernon. Newton has three point thirty-six square feet miles. And, uh, Vernon has sixty-nine point ninety-six square miles. And the population of Newton, it is eight thousand, three hundred seventy-four. And the Vernon is twenty-two point three five eight. I don't know how much you can take that into the consideration. We are pretty much a small town out there. And again, I mean, I don't know, in the beginning, I thought I heard seven thousand calls uh, a month or something, which I did a little calculation, e- even if it is only say seven hundred per week. If you do a calculation, so it's about four calls per hour. Wow. Again, it's a small town. Really, I would like if the elected, uh, people, it will be more, um, uh, I mean, into questioning out there, uh, and doing their, you know, their job, their, their homework before you go ahead about such a proposal. Another thing that I'd like to, to bring to the attention, uh, it's, uh, I mean, uh, in regard to the chief. Now, uh, unfortunately, I was not to con- to congratulate the chief the day that he was appointed, so congratulations to him. Uh, uh, I, I, I did pay attention to the fact that in the past five years, really, it is less than five years, we have three chefs, uh, three chiefs officer out there that they changed, that they got on retirement. During my, um, uh, uh, when I was doing the, I mean, uh, uh, I mean, I was going a meeting with people during the twenty twenty-four, uh, election. It was brought to my attention, such a thing. Uh, I wish that the new chief is going to stay a little longer out there because in the end, uh, appointing a chief and after two years, uh, get the chief retired and then et cetera. It's a lot of money out there that needs to be taken into the consideration when we think that who you are a champion on increasing the taxes to the, to the people out there. And, uh, so basically, uh, and also in regards to the, to the, to the uh, animal patrol, I do know, two years ago, we didn't have someone to pay. Now we do. So really, I do not get that, uh, extra expenses going on. So again, I will advise all of you guys. How much? Just two more, uh, uh, I mean, give me a little more to, 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 to talk here. And, um, uh, so again, I'd like a little more homework from the body governor of this Newton town, because otherwise things are going down the hill. And the third one, which is very sad to watch.
Miss, Miss Macash, time's up. Can I move on?
Uh, Tom, do you want to start addressing that? Because Okay.
I would like to address part of it.
We will, we will, we will, for sure. Okay, uh, our next speaker.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Serene Crowell. Um, I live at, uh, twenty-five Sparta Avenue.
Serene, can you please spell your last name for us?
C R O W E L L.
Thank you.
Okay, um, someone from the historic preservation, the attorney was supposed to send a memo to the council to review with regards to the Black Cemetery, which is on your historic map. Um, we're trying to get, um, an amendment to the old Newton Cemetery is right next to it. Um, to put it on the national registry. So I don't know if you guys received that information. That was just a question.
Russo?
Well, close the public portion.
Okay, we'll come right back to that. Thank you. It's probably, anybody else, Tom? Nobody else for public comment? Okay, Mr. Russo?
Yeah, we have a request that I'm working through about the designating the Black Cemetery. Putting it on the town plot, but I'm trying to first ascertain who owns the cemetery. So I have a call out to Wayne McCabe to start that process. We had just received that last week, but, um, they had made a request. Jessica provided the information to my office.
Okay, so that's under review and, and we'll get an update the more, like a little fact-finding that we need to do with regards to that request. Uh, thank you for raising that. Uh, with regards to Ms. Macash, uh, Deputy Mayor Dixon, we'll start with you.
From what I gather, some of what she was saying was her complaints about, um, the discussion we just had this evening, and I kind of take a little bit of offense here, that she's gonna say that we aren't doing our homework and our due diligence. We just sat here and gave the police chief a list of things that we wanted him to come back with before we make any sort of decision. So I think we are doing our homework. We are asking questions. We're not just rubber stamping things. So I, I didn't really like that part of, of her comment. And then I think she was talking about the chiefs and the retirements and, I mean, I think we went through the whole I mean, I think we went through the whole contract thing here, so we were concerned with the turnover. But we also can't control when people are up for retirement. So, you know, if they're up for their retirement, they're, you know, they've done their time, they're more than, uh. And their right to take that retirement and and it's kind of out of our hands, so that is all I really wanted to just comment on that.
Okay, uh, to just to piggyback on that, I think, um. The fact that we've had candidates well positioned to be chief. Um, speaks to actually the seniority and the long tenure of our officers and this, the careers that they've had here. Um, so I agree with you, uh, wholeheartedly. I also take exception to Ms. Maccaj's comment about this governing body or this administration or the clerk's office or anyone else not doing their due diligence in town. We literally just spent forty-five minutes having a conversation with our chief. Um, and Lieutenant about, uh, their proposition and proposal with regards to the structure of the Police Department. Um, with regards to the comment about comparing Vernon and Newton, I understand. Clearly, the difference in the square acreage and mileage and the number of people, um, if. Attention was being paid, that simply was a conversation about the comparison between the staffing structure and. The layout of the Animal Control Office, uh, with regards to Newton and Vernon, not to the entire structure. Or coverage of the Police Department between the two municipalities, um. I'm not sure if there was another question in there because I didn't catch it in the beginning with, uh, with regards to what she was saying, but any other, uh, comments? With regards to the open public?
Sure, so I'll I'll tack on to that, so.
Okay.
What one thing that often gets, uh, conflated with, um, the volume of emergency responses is that. It's not directly proportional to population or land size. Um, it's much more correlated to the density, socioeconomics. Traffic flow, uh, daytime versus nighttime volume or population. And Newton is a hopping place, um, you know, it took drivers' ed. Many years ago, and I remember Detective Tosti coming in to speak on this matter and said, you know, this is back in two thousand eight. Two thousand seven, maybe, there were five hundred motor vehicle accidents a year in the town and that was almost ten years ago. It, this is a hopping town, it is very busy volume wise, um, and the numbers that were quoted were definitely accurate. Uh, I think there was also a question that Dr. Maccaj asked about whether or not we authorized conversation. And you are authorized to speak with me Friday afternoon.
For the second time, you're proposing that. All right, so let's move on to the next, uh, business for tonight. We have discussions. So this is item ten, discussion with regards to the water sewer projects. How are you? Okay, well, just for the record, have you introduced yourself?
Uh, okay.
Do what? Do you guys want to come forward or are you here observing and listening?
No, they're just keeping me honest.
Okay, all right.
Certain citizens.
They're they're keeping me honest. Uh, my name is Eleni Janakopoulos. I work with suburban consulting engineers. In January, we were appointed as your sewer consulting engineer in support of your active projects. To, uh, initially start off with conducting an audit of the active projects. One of the reasons why you selected us is because we are industry experts on the state revolving fund to secure. Principal forgiveness funds that are available to you. Um, so the first leg of the audit is all of your active projects in the state revolving fund. The state revolving fund consists of two different funding programs, the drinking water state revolving fund. Um, and the clean water state revolving fund. The drinking water state revolving fund is obviously towards your water treatment plant, potable water. The clean water state revolving fund is primarily focusing on water that needs to be cleaned, treated, stormwater sanitary. The town of Newton was eligible to receive two million dollars of principal forgiveness every state fiscal year. For both the clean water and the drinking water state revolving fund. In the tune of two million dollars every state fiscal year effective state fiscal year twenty-three. Suburban Consulting Engineers was helping you through the clean water state revolving fund. I will start off with the backend of the packet, it's a staple packet I gave you. Um, the last page is really yesterday's news, it's just the summary that the town was able to achieve. The maximum amount allowable to you for state fiscal year twenty-three. Um, the maximum allowable was one million dollars at that time. And we did the memory park, um, drainage improvements and secured a hundred percent principal forgiveness for the total amount of that effort. Um, at that time, and I just want to stress, memory park drainage improvements was limited to what we could do to get use of the park. It was not to solve the entire drainage issue because of the topography there. Uh, a massive effort would be to raise all of the features of the park, but then that would take away the whole. Babe Ruth element of the bench and things that are already in place. So we tried to add some rain gardens and some pervious parking lot features. That would meet the program requirements to get the rest balance of the gray infrastructure we had put in there, um, to be covered through the program. Phase two of that would be the dredging of the Moors Brook. Um, we are definitely going through some permitting and, uh, some obstacles with land use because it is. Contaminated site, um, and the debris that we would be removing from the creek would have to be, um. Further evaluated and may end up being cost prohibitive. However, the creek itself, Moors Brook, is over capacity right now. And that's part of the cause why Babe Ruth Park is actually oversaturated, there's nowhere for that water to drain to. Anyway. Part two is the dredging, we're still working on that, but for state fiscal year twenty-three, memory park drainage improvements were covered at a hundred percent principal forgiveness. Last year for state fiscal year twenty-four, we were hoping the Moors Brook dredging would be, um, in place of securing that funding. Uh, DEP permitting is taking a while longer than we anticipated, so we worked with. The boys in the back row and, uh, identified some equipment that they needed to have procured. And we were able to secure at one point the entirety of their equipment procurement that includes, I believe, two Ford F, uh, one fifties. And, um, five fifties and, um, attached, um, plows to the one and, uh. Trailer to the other one to collect the silt that is being removed from the stormwater management, um, system and a street sweeper. Two street sweepers. And see, this way they're there. So we got all of that at a hundred percent principal forgiveness. Um, we are in the process of doing the permanent financing. Um, this spring, which is going to be a note from the I-Bank, pretty much waiving the principal, you don't even have to go through a closing. And, um, the entirety of that two point five million dollars will be waived. So given that with this, we proved that the system works with those two projects. We're taking that same recipe to what you have now in the other project, so we can go now to page one. Uh, after our audit on the availability of, uh, funds and, um. The projects that are more nearing shovel-ready status. Um, the sewer repairs started out as a phase one project. We, um, speaking with Tom, there was ARPA funds that you guys, uh, segregated a p- a piece of that phase one and made it phase two. After two rounds, uh, the sewer repairs were spearheaded from PCI engineers. Um, after a couple rounds of bids, um, they were coming in higher than their estimate. Um, and at the end, uh, when we started joining, we said, all right, let's negotiate with the contractors. Um, I advised Tom not to exceed the amount that was in the ARPA grant because that would be, um, counterintuitive of. Spending the same amount out of pocket than the grant itself. So we moved the balance of that to phase one again. So phase one was all-inclusive, phase two was separated for the ARPA funds, they ended up costing more than you anticipated. We cut phase two to what the ARPA funds could sup- could pay for. Um, and then moved what was removed from phase two back into phase one. So now we have phase one as it is right now for the balance of the work, soon to get approvals from the DEP. The cost estimate is three point four, this is dig and replace, it's not rehabilitation, it's sewer replace, so it's a more costly effort. Um, so that is why we're looking at, uh, a more probable cost that our team put together as opposed to the one million projected. From, uh, the other professionals. That is pretty much going to be in line to get the approvals that we need before June thirtieth. So we can lock in the two million dollars of principal forgiveness for state fiscal year twenty-five. The pump station consolidation, the Marion Pump Station is not near, uh, approvals from the DEP yet. We're projecting that to be in about three months out, which would be state fiscal year twenty-six. However, the other one that's close to the race is the generator. The generator design has been uploaded already, it's going through DEP review. I anticipate that to get an approval to go out to bid probably May into early June. And we would by design push the award after July first, so we could capture the SFY twenty-six funding, again, two million dollars. The wastewater treatment plan, chemical room upgrades, uh, is progressing. Uh, the sand filters is progressing at a faster rate. We anticipate those, uh, design documents to be uploaded into H two loans by PSNS. We're holding the existing engineers accountable to finalize the design on these. The town has spent a substantial amount. The next page on the backend has the breakdown by project. Where, uh, the sewer repairs, the planning and design is of an estimate of two hundred and twenty-one thousand. That the town has paid for the professionals to design this project because it went out to bid so many times. Uh, there's a substantial amount there, so those are estimated amounts and budgetary amounts to make sure this time around, we don't go. We don't come back to you and ask for more money. Um, the pump station consolidation is authorized, the planning and design is one sixteen, nine twenty-five. Um, and the, um, engineering bid and construction phase services are estimated right now. But we are holding PSNS accountable to finalize the design documents for that. Um, the sewer repairs we took on, uh, because it was lingering for approvals at the DEP, the design was pretty much done. We advised PCI what to revise in their design documents to get us the final approvals. And we have a proposal, uh, that we provided and it was in tonight's agenda for us to carry it through bid and construction. The chemical room wastewater treatment plan upgrades, uh, PCI is designing that, we're holding them accountable to complete that design. We, uh, Mike McAlun of our office is our department manager for Water Wastewater, is meeting with the boys. Uh, routinely to understand what their, there is a, a small discrepancy on what they. Their wish list is and what the final end design is looking like. In some of these cases, they're a little bit above and beyond what the team was expecting, and they're like, this is taking too long, get this done already. I need this, this and this. So for those projects that the cost estimates are higher than what the ordinance would allow. We are communicating with the design engineers to reduce the scope to what the sewer utility needs, so we can stay within budget. Sand filters, um, they are needed, we look at the design, even though the cost estimate is much higher than was originally anticipated. We stand by that amount and, um, DPW and the sewer guys are definitely agreeing that that is what needs to happen, no matter what the cost, so we're proceeding with that. Sparta Avenue Pump Station, that project has a history of its own, it started, it had, you know, it's really the, um. It passed through many hands of professionals. Um, I believe that, uh, Matt McDonald started with a design and, uh, with the recommendations, PCI took it on. Um, and it just went from there, uh, PSNS was brought in to do some of the permitting. It it was just destined to take too long, um, because of so many different. Hands on it. Um, given, having said that, the ordinance that was introduced in twenty twenty-three was for an amount of. Four point one million dollars. We want to stand by that amount. The design documents that were provided to us by PCI, uh, Mike McAlun sat down and reviewed them with the team. Um, the team, um, expressed their, uh, wishes of prioritization of what needs to be tackled in that design. We can be removed from that design so that we can get this on the street already and have it approved and, um, bid. Kenny would like to see this out to bid before he retires. Fact?
You don't have a lot of time.
Well, we're working on that, so the next part of this conversation is that after our design audit and approval audit. Um, there was, uh, a friendly debate on the permits that were required for this. Um, there is a new building that's going to be installed. Uh, we were of the opinion that the DEP would need land use permits for, um, the proposed improvements. Um, the third-party professionals, uh. Advised that, uh, verification would be sufficient. Um, I hate to tell you that last Friday, the DEP agreed, um, and sided with our recommendation that you need to have, uh, a land use permit. And a full hack grass analysis, which the bad news is, is that we need to do survey and we need to prove. All of the environmental constraints and adverse impacts of this improvement to the environment and the flood plain. Um, so that will push things out a little bit. Um, so we will prepare a proposal for you for the full scope, we just got word of it last Friday from the DEP that they will require that. Um, it was part of the reason of the delay of the approvals from the DEP, they ran an internal, uh, review as well. For climate resiliency and land use picked it up as well and just happened organically, um, from the DEP review side. So now we need to give you a proposal, we will take that on and do what needs to be done as we already had foreseen this. Um, we will communicate with PCI to finalize the design because they have completed eighty-five percent of that design. Including the final, um, revisions that we're asking them on behalf of the sewer utility. Um, we anticipate that with, um, the DEP review, they need a ninety-day review period. I'm giving you these explanations to understand why we're not going out to bid in March or April. We're looking to go out to bid hopefully by November. Now, we're hoping that when we submit to the DEP for their thirty, uh, first you get administrative completion. I'm I'm giving you the the reality of things, this project has been along for a while. They're on the third extension for a Treatment Works Approval Permit, that's a TWA permit. That third extension and final extension ends in January. So now that we have to do this, uh, land use permitting and hack grass analysis. Um, and they have ninety days to review and then provide comment, I hope we can secure approvals by November to go out to bid. I would rather prepare you for the worst where we might also have to renew the TWA and resubmit. So if not November, then we're looking at February. It's a very detailed analysis they're expecting to see for the hack grass analysis. I, uh, I'm confident that we would give them what they need to see so that we can move through their approvals. Um, ideally, we'd like to go out to bid in November, but if it's beyond our control, just letting you know, the other. Um, bottleneck is the January deadline on the third and final extension on the TWA.
Um, the process look like if we have to do a.
TWA, so as we advance the land use reviews and we see where they're going, if they're going to delay the process. We might just resubmit a TWA before January and start the clock ticking for the, you know, ninety-day review, so we're not. And we would have an open line of communication with them, but if the land use is doing the review and they see what they want to see from our analysis. There's no reason to spend money to do another TWA application. But, um, we will be proactive to not lose much time after that. Now, given the cost estimate that we received from PCI on what they're designing for the pump station, their estimate is a three point two million. The budgetary amounts that I'm showing in every project, the five, three and twelve percent are standard budgets that. Um, the I-Bank is utilizing in a loan application. So we want to make sure that the total projected costs are less than your ordinance. Because then the I-Bank will now let us go into a loan closing for anything over than you have in your ordinance. So we will be, um, working with PCI to reduce the scope anyway for what we were talking about and try to keep everything below the four point one. So I don't anticipate at this time to come back and ask for more money for the pump station at Sparta Avenue, okay? All right, the next page is the, um, fifth project that you have, um, in the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Oh, and by the way, the pump station, the Sparta Avenue Pump Station. We want to make sure that that secures the state fiscal year twenty-seven funding for two million dollars. Given the timeline of where we're looking at with all of the approvals and going out to bid, um. This might be the one that locks in funding for our state fiscal year twenty-seven. The runner-up that might cut the line for that might be the digester conversion and primary sludge pump replacement. Um, that is, uh, also advancing, um, in some capacity. I am curious which one of the two will make it to the final approvals at the DEP, but I'm not rushing to get those approvals. Because we already have the SFY twenty-five funding already accounted for, the SFY twenty-six funding is already accounted for. Um, the sewer utility representatives are saying the digester is priority two. So if this gets the approvals to go out to bid, what I would like to present to you is that if I don't have the two million dollars in principal forgiveness for this. Say this gets approvals in state fiscal year twenty-six. And we already said state fiscal year twenty-six will be the generator project. We want you to have the faith that whatever we advance to go out to bid would still be at seventy-five percent no interest. So prioritization from the sewer utility and the DPW staff, this is priority two. They really want this to be out and done next to Sparta Avenue Pump Station. So if we do proceed and we're skipping over state fiscal years, I thought we already got. So if we do proceed and we're skipping over state fiscal years, I thought we already got the money. We're getting the money on things that you need to get done. Prioritization projects would have to come in. Regardless of what state fiscal year they're approved. If they're approved, we need to move them along. They've been on the waitlist for too long. So if we were to proceed at three point two million uh. Projected cost is three point eight. Um, the ordinance amounts are right now looking at three point two. We want to go through that final review with the DPW staff, see if we really need to have that to be the amount, if not sharpen our pencils. Um, I don't anticipate coming back to you for six hundred thousand dollars to increase that ordinance. We're hoping that we can um. See what we can do, but I also don't want to put you in a predicament where we're getting bids higher. Than what we have in the ordinance and we have to reject and go through three rounds of bids like you had done in the past for other projects. So. We'll keep you in tune when we get close to that um final design and approvals. So that's the summary of your clean water state revolving fund projects. Um. The last page um is the water system projects. So we have. The good news is that for your water system projects, your bond ordinances that you have in place right now between twenty twenty three oh eight and twenty twenty four twenty five. We have enough money to cover the projects that we have shown here. Um, I'm trying, I'm working with your bond council. We just got the zero zero one loan under short term loan. Um, that was the missing step to secure the principal forgiveness for the water treatment plant, chemical room upgrades and the SCADA. Um, otherwise it was going to linger and lose funding uh this cycle. So we are in the process of closing on that. And the uh. Water tank. Cleaning. I don't know if you heard about the um. This project went out to bid three times. The engineer's cost estimate was um a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. And after the third round of bids, it came in at two ninety nine as the apparent little bidder was coastal. And the second bidder was um. At four hundred and seventy nine thousand. And there's a reason for that. These are your clean. Your clear wells. These are the um raw water. Wells where you're receiving water and then you're treating the water. So there's sediment that builds at the bottom. Um, we talked with the boys and we asked if there would be a way to have each well out of service so we can empty it out. And then physically remove the silt at the bottom. There's no mechanism that we could do that. Um. According to um your water utility staff, they needed to keep it in service. So that requires a diver. To go in and. Scuba his way and shoveling out the debris, which costs more. They did receive a quote for less than fifty thousand dollars to do this work five years ago. That company is no longer in business. There might be a reason for that. Um, but no, there's a reason for that. They they they. Had a couple of their staff get hurt, right? Isn't that how they, anyway? Safety concerns, but they could have had it done five years ago for, I'm I'm giving the pointers back to, I told you so, they told us so. That they could have had this done. Now it's costing a few more bucks. However, the state fiscal year twenty five, your max is two million dollars. So I'm trying to squeeze that into the same state fiscal year and we'll get it done for free. So ultimately between. The SCADA, the Morris Lake Chemical Room and the tank cleaning. Um, if you add up the uh total project costs at the bottom of three sixty one, one point two and four thirty three. The amount adds up to roughly two million, seven thousand, five hundred and thirty three dollars. Uh, we'll secure two million dollars in principal forgiveness for you. You only have to pay seven thousand out of pocket.
So we're not really going to finance that. We're going to pay that out of cash, right?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, you will close on the, yeah.
Well, because it says here, you know.
Well, that's because it's a boilerplate breakdown. Yes, there's no penalty for you to pay it off. And plus the one thousand eight hundred and eighty three that will gain interest, there's no interest to the I bank anyway. So state fiscal year twenty six will be the high street pump station upgrades. That could get another two million. Right now, the the cost estimate from PCI for that is two hundred and four thousand dollars. Um, all this is showing. Is that we're leaving money on the table for state fiscal year twenty six. So we'll talk with, first, I want to. Keep ourselves honest and secure the funding for the um sewer improvements. Uh, have the loan in place already for the generator. Um, we're in their good graces. Uh, we get the loan uh in place for zero zero one and zero zero three. And then I can speak to them and say, all right, what else you got? Because we're leaving one point six on the table.
Agreed.
So that's my summary for now.
Mr. Perry, anything to add?
All I could say is. Better her than me because um what what we've been through. Um, me analyzing. Um, you get, you know, just keep giving uh Laney. Information to put something like this together, to put it together. To to know how um DEP works and H two O, how that all works and how she can get it all. Time together, talking to the guys and getting this all on paper is uh, that's why she's here. Because it's a monstrous job. And it's laid out perfectly. And now we got a game plan. Prior to this, it was just, it was just a mess. And I would never be able to do it. No way.
Any, I got any? Input that you all would like to provide?
I need pretty much covered. If they know where we're going.
Okay.
Yeah, so do we.
We just wanted to state that we're, our first priority is to get you the money the quickest way and not. We have their prioritization and we're not diminishing that. Um, but if I wait for priority one to be ready to go out to bid, I lose funding cycle for S F Y twenty five. There's a reason those projects were in the ra- on the radar and they were advancing. So I don't want to have all of that. Soft costs and planning and design go to waste. So there's a reason why the sewer improvements are the first ones to go out to bid, even though they probably want to choke on that because like I I don't care about that. I need my operations to be running better. But that is a three million dollar effort that we can get a two million dollar discount for it today. The generator is also uh approaching approvals. What I need you to understand. Is that if Sparta Avenue is approved to go out to bid. Um, and I'm securing the T W A, I have to have the shovel in the ground before that third expiration. I might double dip on the same state fiscal year when I'd already had accounted for the two million elsewhere. It will just be seventy five percent interest free, which is still a lot better than doing a bond. And it is priority one for your utility that that gets done. So that's the main takeaway from this presentation.
Yeah, I mean, I think for me, the biggest thing is maximizing the opportunity of the principal forgiveness at the max that we can every single year. Because all of the projects have to get done. And yes, I understand that we have a prioritization and there's a process on each of them, but. Um, you know, part of all of this conversation for several years and several budget cycles has been. The promise of principal forgiveness, favorable financing, um et cetera, so on and so forth. So I think that's my priority. I'm not speaking on behalf of the rest of the council, but. Um, I certainly appreciate the work that's gone in thus far since the reassigning of the contract and certainly. Um, I love a good color coded spreadsheet. So just being able to see, and I know Sandy, this was a concern of yours, like being able to see everything in one. Presentation and then being able to make sense of it and the status of it. The potential for the principal forgiveness and then the other financing costs, um, interest free is always good, et cetera. So. Um, I appreciate that and also um completely concur about taking advantage. Making the numbers work so we can take advantage of the fiscal years of that funding. Um. I work in a business that uh. Forty eight percent of our funding is grant funded and um being paying for a lot of comfort, a lot of attention to what's happening at the federal level. With regards to mandates and funds and things and changes that are happening. So. I'm also on, have this bit of sense of urgency that anything that we can get locked in sooner rather than later. Because while we're projecting future fiscal years and Michelle can speak to this more than I can. Um, you know, that's all to be determined. We can project, but we will need to. Absolutely take advantage of what we can now and lock in what we can.
The only thing I can deliver um. In um, in my console today is that the bi- bipartisan infrastructure law, the B I L money. That was introduced in state fiscal year twenty three was committed to be in place till state fiscal year twenty seven. It's money that's already been approved by Congress. And the federal government to be used over the course of five years. That's why I'm not going into state fiscal year twenty eight with any assumptions. Um, just for the sake of argument of what was recently um issued uh with a memo and then rescinded by the federal government and the Office of uh Management. Man, O M B, management budget. Um, it was really looking at what is um strictly uh prioritizing D E and I projects. Um, the state of New Jersey is defining affordability by not uh minority, minority limited English. You are designed designated as an affordability criteria municipality based on your mean household income. Unemployment rate and population change, which is not anything to do. So even if there was a delay in the funding, which there isn't at this time. Um, the DEP could easily substantiate that our affordability criteria in the state of New Jersey is not um in any conflict with the um.
Orange cherry of a great.
And the executive order, yep.
On top of all this, we've got seventeen million dollars of. Authorized debt, the seven million adds now twenty four million. I've never come to the mayor and council to ask to borrow a temporary note. Bond anticipation note. The way this works is. Uh, Elaney basically is putting, we're having note closes as these projects are coming. That's the other thing she's very conscientious of. Me losing sleep every night. To pay for these projects. So we we basically, once we have a note closing, then she goes in. And is able to put in her reimbursements to get some of these done. There's projects that we have. Like one point five million, I think we were talking about.
Well, right now it's the water projects. Um, you awarded it to V N L and you also awarded the SCADA projects and. Tom is losing sleep because you have an ordinance with uh approved spending. But no funding source for it, right? So that's where he would need a note to front the payments.
Right.
So that's why I jumped in and I said, let me talk to your bond council. They have the the loan closing on those that are approved. Um, I can get as soon as the loan closing, which is now scheduled for March nine. Teenth.
Yeah.
March nineteenth. That's in a week or so. Um, as soon as the loan closing is in place, I can submit a reimbursement for all the soft costs that the town has paid to date. And any contractor payments that are coming in, we can then upload and get a good reimbursement.
Because you have a funding source, right?
All those projects that she was talking about. Are have to line up like all that. So that's the other thing that she's doing is as the projects start up. We do the, we would talk to bond council, they get the the.
Short term.
Short term loans. And that's not, when we talk about short term loans, that's not us borrowing. It's it's I bank. Up basically saying, okay, you're allowed to now start withdrawing. Um, or getting, putting in payment requests so we can start paying the vendors.
And I have to worry about notes. So that's all over the overall debt capacity. Um, and then this spring, the two point six million dollars that we're talking about, the procurement of equipment and the uh Morse. Uh, memory park. Um, you will have the two point six million dollars waived from your general debt. Because that was under your general fund. So. Keep the faith. This will, this will work out.
Any other comments or questions? J P, Sandy, Matt, Michelle?
Uh, it was a good rundown. No, thank you.
Just great. See a plan in place.
Yeah.
And.
With some dates.
Seasons.
Yeah.
You know, kind of more forethought to. Just don't go, we could go do.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Tom Russo, anything to add to that discussion?
Nope.
Okay, um. So council manager comments. Uh, so we all received uh numerous applications for volunteers of people that are interested in serving on our boards and commissions. Um, Kat also sent us all a memo with the open positions available. So um what Matt and I are wondering tonight is how the council wants to proceed with the interviews of the candidates. So since we have seven. That's a couple of hours of interviews if we're going to do. Um, all of that and Kat's got to help us schedule and just thoughts on, are we interviewing everybody? Does the council want to look at? Recommendations based on the resumes uh for. Do we want to? Uh, if we have three people interested in playing board, do we want to do a panel interview of all three at once? I mean, I think we can get creative and. With our processes.
So and looking over some of the applications, some kind of were a little more complete and a little more. Well thought out from the others. It's kind of interesting. Name and what they were interested in. That was kind of it.
Right, and we don't have to interview all right.
I kind of was in the thought process of the ones that. I kind of thought for a little more time and effort in the application process. I feel like we could give the time to have an interview.
Okay.
I have not looked over all of them, but I did see some of what you're saying. And I know we just recently got a couple of more, a cup.
One more today, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I've not looked over those. So maybe we could take a, take a look and if we see some obvious ones, you know. That we think would fit on a board.
Okay, so maybe I would suggest that if the council can review all of the applications this week and let us know by Friday. So. Matt and I during our weekly meeting um on noon on Friday can. Uh, come back to the council then with the recommendation and certainly let Tom and Kat know. Uh, how to proceed in terms of scheduling interviews or not. Um, and compare up the applications against the vacancies. Uh, is that a reasonable amount of time for the council to review those applications? Yeah, yeah, Michelle, good?
Yes.
Okay, Kat and Tom, does that work? Okay. So council will get back to everybody with their thoughts on the. Matching up the candidates and the vacancies and uh the suggestion on how to proceed.
If, yeah.
So like I said, we could do individual interviews, we could do no interviews, we can do panel interviews. Um, because the other thing then is looking at calendars and looking at the upcoming meetings and figuring out how we want to do that. Um. Alternatively, we could do something with virtual interviews. So I think we have some flexibility, right, Tom? On how we do, I knew that doesn't have to do, it doesn't have to be the same way that we've always done them, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Okay, good. Uh, I have no other council manager comments. Mr. Russo? Deputy Mary Dixon?
What's up, Mr.?
Councilwoman Teets?
Um, just to my homework assignment.
Councilwoman Diglio?
Councilwoman Kuz.
Okay, uh, seeing no other business then, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine forty six P M.
And I will second that one.
All right, I have a motion by Councilwoman Teets, although I was writing Kuz for some reason, and a second by Councilwoman Diglio, uh. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.